I see a green dot, that's a good sign.
Good, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a streaming key may have just been a little bit off.
All right, Council President Lou received it, so she's on, awesome.
Yeah.
The mayor. Mayor. Mayor made it, good.
And I just advised Counselor Newton, and let me tell, oh, there's Youth Counselor Calderon, okay.
Yep. Yeah, Counselor Goodhouse just told me, so I think we're going to be good.
Okay, good.
Give everyone a second here.
Just FYI, we are live streaming, we wanted to make sure we have that up and running, so we'll be calling the order here in just a moment, we have everyone.
All right, Counselor Shaw has made it.
Hello.
Also Newton. Just Counselor Goodhouse, I believe, right? I don't see him yet.
I think so. Oh, and here he is.
Okay. All right, it looks like we have everyone, Sarah. There's a couple leadership team members still trying to get on. Kathy.
I actually lost power this morning, so I was a little panicked that my devices weren't going to work, but I figured it out.
Wonderful.
We're an agile, flexible organization. I have a gas blower on my, right here, right now, so, see how I can manage with that for a while.
Do we, so we're just waiting on a few, is that right, Steve, before we're ready to call the order?
I think we called the order, we have the entire council here. I'm gonna have Carol take the lead at this point.
All right, Carol, are you gonna do the?
This is Carol, can you hear me? Yes.
Carol, you are cutting out of it.
No, we can't.
It's, it's kind of spotty.
No. Looks like you have two connections going, maybe the other one's better.
Okay, so, can you hear that I can do wrong?
Don't get here.
Yeah, Carol, it's still.
You still can't hear?
That's better.
Okay, let's try.
I think we need some people to mute their, mute as well, we're getting feedback. Toby's on twice. Brian's unmuted.
My mute button seems to have a little green thing moving, so I don't know if you can hear me.
We can hear you now, Carol.
Loud and clear.
Okay, Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Youth Counselor Calderon.
Here.
Counselor Goodhouse.
Here.
Counselor Newton. Council President Lou.
Here.
Council Shaw.
Here.
Okay.
So it sounds like right now we still have a few people that are, that aren't muted, and I know I'm getting feedback on my end, so if we can, kind of be like a council meeting here, if you're not speaking, have it muted. Sarah, are you ready to go?
I'm ready.
All right, well, let's turn it over to Mayor Snyder here to kick off today's discussion, and then we'll hand it over to you.
Well, I want to welcome everyone and thank both the leadership team and the council for really joining in this exercise that is really important and crucial to the city as a whole and the organization, to make sure that we have clear goals and objectives and alignment between both the council and the leaders that are tasked with making, making things happen in the city. And in about two years ago, when we, when I became mayor, we had a, I think the first time I'd ever seen where we had the leadership team very engaged and, and actually raising issues to the council that needed to be addressed in the past, it was more of a one-way, the council providing sort of, this is what you're going to do, and maybe there were a few questions here and there, but we had a, I think, a much better result a couple of years ago from a more collaborative process, and I look forward to us getting underway with that today. So, thank you all for taking the time to be here today.
All right, thank you, Mayor, for those introductory comments, and I just want to say thank you to everybody for your efforts in helping to prepare for today's, today's workshop, today's advance. I know it's, it's a lot of effort, and it's a big commitment to take an entire Friday afternoon and part of your Saturday to commit to this, but the work that we did in advance, I think, will help to get us off on the right foot and, and to help get you guys off on a good start for the next couple of years, as you work to advance your goals and, and serve the Tigerd community. So, I want to get us started by just taking a look at our agenda. One of the, I know we've all embraced lots of new technology this year, one of the tools that I use, the council got to preview this as part of our, our initial training, is Mural, and so I'm going to go ahead and shift over to our mural whiteboard, so we can take a look at our agenda and our outcomes for today. Just a moment. All right, so outcomes for today. We are going to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of the last year, we want to establish a shared understanding of the community context, and then align with the city's vision as the basis for our goal-setting work that we're going to do today. We want to also develop a focus list of shared high-level goals that align with the city's strategic plan and the recommendations of the city's performance audit. So you guys have done a lot of work on those two documents, we want to make sure we stay in alignment with those, with those plans. As part of our work tomorrow, we're also going to review the council's ground rules and develop a new team agreement that will guide the council's working relationship over the next couple of years. We'll also do some, have some discussion on a team agreement today for our, just talk about the team dynamic of council and staff as part of today's work. And then last, in that vein, we want to build a collaborative and aligned team between the council and staff to advance the council's goals. So that's our focus for this advance, and the agenda as far as how we're going to get there for today, we're going to start out, we're going to set some, some intentions, to be really intentional about our work together, and review, we're doing our agenda review right now. We'll reorient to our goal process, so that you guys know the process we're going to move through to, to get to those goals. We'll talk briefly about participant roles, we'll establish some ground rules to help keep us on track, and we'll do a team warm-up. Then we'll shift into looking back and looking ahead, so that'll be our review and celebration of the 2020 accomplishments, we'll get aligned with the city's vision, and then we'll jump into that context mapping exercise. So again, that will be where some of the pre-work will come into play, I'll share some of the challenges and opportunities that you guys highlighted in your interviews and in your surveys, and then we'll add to that, we'll discuss some of the themes that came out, answer any questions that might come up as a result of that review, and then just maybe share some team insights that, that come to mind as you look at all of that in one big picture. So that's all to gain that, to have that shared understanding before we get into the goal-setting piece. We'll take a quick break, 10-minute break at 1:35, and then when we come back from that, start in on the idea mapping for the goals. So that will be small group breakout sessions, where you guys will have a chance to, with that shared understanding, think about what do we want to work on for the future, and start to get all of those ideas down that will eventually refine into goals. So we'll do the small group breakouts, and then we'll come back together for the team discussion. Any members of the public who are watching today's broadcast, just know that during those breakouts, you'll, you'll get to view whatever, whatever's happening in the general session, and then when the group, when the small groups come back, they'll do that report out, so you can hear what they discussed during the breakout sessions. We'll have some team discussion around that, and then take another, take another break, and then shift into the goal refinement exercise. So that's where we'll start to look at those ideas, and through those themes that we see emerging, start to actually zero in on some of the goals that we want to accomplish for the next two years. We'll wrap up the work later this afternoon at 3:45, where we talk about how we're going to work together as a team. That will include some discussion of the policy and administration roles, so what's the role of the council versus the role of staff, and how are we going to work together as partners to move these goals forward? We'll do a quick reflection of all of our work for the day, and then wrap everything up, starting at 4:50, talk about our next steps, and then have, have this meeting adjourned by 5 o'clock. Any questions about the agenda? Okay. Great, well, let's shift over and look at the goal-setting process here for a moment. So, council saw this as part of our training work, and staff saw this in, in an earlier presentation when we were preparing for today, but one, one thing I added to it was just this first step that we did of orienting the team. So council did some work around building team awareness and understanding their strengths and how they want to work together as a team as part of their, their core strength exercise and training. And the leadership team also had a chance to orient to the context of today's conversation and think about what their role is for today and just this process. So, we've already done some orientation of the team. The next thing we're going to do is set our intention, so again, I want us to be really intentional about the work, we want to build some camaraderie amongst the council, we want to come out of this with a focus list of shared goals and priorities, we want to balance new innovative work with also maintaining those strong core services. So just be thinking about what your intention is for this work today, because we're going to share those in just a moment. Then we'll align with the city's vision, so thinking about what Tigerd's vision is and where are we going, and then the next step will be to look back, reflect, and celebrate, so we'll review those accomplishments, think about what we want to build on, celebrate and recognize the team, get into that context review, then gather up those ideas, it'll be that brainstorming exercise, refine the goals, and then tomorrow, as part of the, the council's work together, we'll be making a plan. So, thinking about what the priorities are, confirming consensus or team agreement around those goals, and then doing some work around the ground rules and developing the council's team agreement. So that's our process that we will be going through today and tomorrow. All right, next step here, just a quick preview of our roles for today. So, as the facilitator, my role is to guide you guys through the conversation, help us stay focused on the agenda and achieving those outcomes that we set, and then we'll be setting some ground rules here in just a moment, but I'm also tasked with the, the not-so-fun or sometimes necessary job of having to enforce those ground rules to keep us on track. So just know I do that with, with respect and good intentions to keep us moving towards those outcomes. The council's role today is to set the policy for the community, you guys represent the community members that elected you, and so we want to have that community perspective brought forward and, and have you serve in that policy-setting role. Staff's role is also really important today, you guys do this work day in and day out, and so we want to hear those ideas, experiences, and that perspective. You bring a lot of valuable technical expertise to the table, so we hope to see that really surface in that idea mapping exercise and support the council as they think about policies and where they might need some, some support if they have questions or, or need that expertise. Any other comments or questions about roles? Everybody good? Okay. Then the next piece, this is where I need everybody's participation, is we need to set some ground rules. So ground rules are, we can call them ways of proceeding, however you want to refer to them, but they're to help us move through our work in an effective way, and, and make sure that everybody can safely engage and participate and make this time as productive as possible. So a couple rules that I just have for, that have been great practices for virtual meetings, is first of all, let's all be patient with the facilitator and the technology each other, if you need help, please ask for help by just speaking up, or you can put something in the chat. Sometimes, the chat can sometimes be hard to monitor when we've got all these different screens going, but I do my best to try and pay attention to it, but if for some reason I don't see your chat message, please speak up, don't, don't struggle or, or be disengaged because you need some help, let's make sure that we provide the help and support everybody needs. Next one here is just if you could raise hands to speak in a virtual environment, it can get really hectic if everybody's trying to, to talk and share great ideas at once. So, you can use the hand raise feature, because I have dual screens going here, you can also physically raise your hand, and I'll, I'll recognize you that way, whatever works best for you. The next rule here, that just for virtual meetings, it makes, ensures we're, we're effective, is to keep cameras on during the meeting as, as much as you possibly can. I understand that there are occasionally the circumstances, because we work from home and have family members or other responsibilities there, sometimes that can be a challenge, but as much as you can, please cameras on during the meeting, and just wait until a break comes up to, to be able to turn them off. And just to let you know, on the screen, if you're not on camera, I have the, the squares hidden, so, so that we can focus on, on the faces in the meeting. Let's see, and then this last ground rule, this will be more so for tomorrow, when we talk, when we finish that goal refinement phase, but it's really for the council. Just to know that goals will move forward, so as we get into that refinement process, and maybe we're having some discussion or debate around which goals should move forward, those will move forward with consensus or majority support. And the reason for that rule is that we want to make sure that there's not just a one-off goal getting put forward by an individual counselor, so I'll poll everybody to make sure that there's a majority support or consensus of the council that wants to move something forward, so we make sure that there's support from the whole team. So those are the ones that, that I use for virtually every council retreat, virtual session, so, but I'd love to hear from the team, what else do you guys need to make sure that we're successful in this effort? I'm going to stop sharing for a second, so I can see everybody's faces. Yeah, Steve?
I would suggest a combination of listening first and asking clarifying questions, so we have a common understanding.
Okay.
We don't have a misunderstanding what someone's saying.
Great, capturing that. Others? Yeah, Mayor Snyder?
I would ask for everyone to be genuine and authentic in their communication, and just, you know, be direct and say what they mean respectfully, but no kind of circling around the issues or avoiding.
Okay, yes, that's always helpful, especially in a virtual meeting, these can go long, so the more direct and respectful we can be, the better. Others? Is this like the post-lunch quiet crowd? All right, because I know you guys have a lot to say, you're saving it for the goal-setting, I'm assuming. All right, last chance, any other rules?
Not a rule, but to be authentic to the mayor's point, having just ended a workday and immediately jumping into council, it's just a, I should have allowed more transition time, so I'm trying to make a mind change.
Okay, yeah, so just, let's, let's respect that, yeah, this Friday afternoon, end of the week, and lots of, lots of Zoom meetings happening throughout the week, or Microsoft Teams, or whatever other platform you participated on, so I recognize that it'll take a moment here to get centered, and we're actually going to take some time to do that. One other thing I might just suggest is, if you can recall from the core strengths training, it's just remember that you guys all come into this work, I heard from staff in their surveys, and we got to do a little debrief meeting, they're really passionate, their passion for their, their work, the passion for public service really comes through strongly in their responses, and in getting to work with the council ahead of this, you guys really care about your community. So I think if we can just remember to assume positive intent, I think you guys all have the best of intentions to do the best work possible to serve the Tigerd community, and, and although maybe there may be a disagreement that comes up occasionally throughout our conversation, if you can remember that we can assume positive intent from everybody, I think that makes, makes for just a better team environment. Is everybody game for that? All right, excellent. One other thing I'm going to share in the chat with you is, if you would like to join on the mural board, you're welcome to, I've got most of it pretty locked down, so you can't move anything or mess anything up, so I'm going to go ahead and paste that link into the chat, and if you'd like to virtually join, it can be, it can be really helpful to be able to kind of see the whole big picture coming together. Let's see if it'll, will let me do it. Okay, there we go. So I just placed that in the chat, so feel free to join me on the mural board. If you'd like. Okay. So, next up, let's do a quick team warm-up, now that we've got our ground rules in place. So, as I mentioned, we, I know it's, it's been a busy, busy week, busy day, so just take a moment to maybe take a deep breath, and just kind of center yourself around this work that we're doing today. This is, this is intended to set your direction for the next couple of years, for what you're going to work on for your community within your organization, and, and so just, I want, I want to try to move through this meeting, each of us with a specific intention in mind, you know, think about what you want to get out of it, and, and maybe why this work is important. So reflect on that for a moment, and we're going to share the, we're going to go around and do a quick share of our intentions, and then the other thing, if you would, also, I just recently read this Matthew Conahay's book, Greenlights, and one of the fun things he incorporates into it are these bumper stickers throughout, either cool bumper stickers that he's seen throughout his life, or bumper stickers that he thought to, to, that need to be created or need to exist in some format. So bumper stickers include fun sayings, maybe inspirational saying, something that motivates us, so if you were to have to create your own bumper sticker, what would that be? Maybe something that's related to why you enjoy working with the Tigerd community, what, what inspires you, it could be something totally fun and goofy that you're thinking about for the weekend or for, for just the season, so if we could go around and share your intention and share your bumper sticker. I'll give you a moment to think about it, and then the format we'll do is, I'll call, I'll ask for a volunteer to go first, and then once that volunteer goes and shares, they can call on the next person. So as soon as somebody's ready, feel free to raise your hand and kick us off.
I'll jump in.
All right, Counselor Goodhouse, thank you.
So, a bumper sticker and something I've used even for my, my day job for a kind of a slogan, and something I've kind of gone by for a long time, is the only limitations in life are those of the mind. I think that a lot of times that, you know, people, there's, you say you can't do something, or that's impossible, or that hasn't been done, but I think the only limitations is what your mind says you can or can't do, if you have an open mind and an open perspective, you can do anything.
All right, thank you for sharing that, I love it, and then what's your intention for the day?
Um, intention is to really consider the entirety of the city of Tigerd, our effect in the region, and really encompassing everything from our citizens to our businesses, to the way of life it is, and, and the quality and way of life we want for all residents, citizens, citizens and businesses.
All right, perfect, thank you. Who wants to, who are you going to call on next?
Um, I'll throw it over to the chief.
Okay, first of all, I'm not a bumper sticker person, so I, you know, I, I don't have any and don't do it, but I always thought this was a, you know, a green leaf Birkenstock type thing, but given everything that I've gone, you know, the world has gone through, that coexist bumper sticker that you see, I think it would be, if I was going to put anything, I'd probably put that, and, and actually look beyond what I used to interpret that bumper sticker to mean, and really just embrace all of our differences and, you know, kind of be kind to one another. My intentions are to hear everybody's different viewpoints that they bring to the table, to look beyond my own area of responsibility, meaning the PD, and how, as an entire city, so as a city leader, how can I help us move our goals forward? So getting beyond just police stuff and being an active leadership team member. And with that, I will punt it off to Liz Newton, Counselor Newton.
Thank you, Chief. All right.
Thank you, Chief, really quick, you know, I kind of do look at bumper stickers, and one that I saw recently that sort of resonated with me was, in a world where all things are possible, be kind, and so I, I thought, given everything that's going on right now, that sort of was simple to me. In terms of intentions, I'm, I'm thinking about the work we do and how important it is to everyone in our community. I will say I've been really affected by the discussions we're having at the Public Safety Advisory Board, and it's really given me a new appreciation for being mindful of the priorities we set, and it being necessary to think about everybody in our community and making sure we're equitable in how we provide services, and think about the things that our community needs us to provide for them to live healthy lives here, so. And I will punt it to Holstead.
Thanks, Counselor Newton, good afternoon, everyone. I am going to, as my bumper sticker, I'm going to choose something that I saw and I wrote down, and now I can't remember where I saw it, but I really liked it. It's be weird, be transparent, be authentic, be yourself. And my intention today is to consider the people who aren't at this table, as we try and move forward as a city, to think about issues of equity, diversity, and inclusion, and those people who aren't in this specific group of leaders, and consider them, and I will choose Counselor Shaw.
Thank you, I'm similar to the chief, I'm not really a bumper sticker person, so if I were, I'd probably be proud to be a citizen of Tigerd and proud to be a council member. My intention is to listen, to be open, to be mindful of other perspectives, and to help be collaborative, so we can make sure the next two days are beneficial to not only us as a team, but for the city. And I will pitch it over to Kenny.
Thanks, hi, everyone, yeah, I'm not so much a bumper sticker person either, I mean, I was thinking like, go Ducks, but I don't think that's what we're going for today, sorry.
There's no rule on that, you can be go Ducks if you want.
I once saw a bumper sticker that said, "All who wander are not lost," but I thought that was more for my brother than me, but anyway. my, yeah, my intention today is pretty simple. It's alignment. I want to understand as best as I can, best I can, where this council wants to take this city and how the leadership team can be aligned with that. Youth counselor Calderon.
I am also not a bumper sticker person, and because I can't remember any bumper stickers right now, I'm going to go with the one that I have on my car, which is student driver. But I'm choosing that because, I mean, I'm still a kid, I'm just trying to figure it out, you know, student drivers, you've got to be wary wary about, but at the same time, I'm a student and I'm also a very in, I would consider myself a very influential member of my community. And, you know, the youth are our future, but we're also the now. So I would say that's a very important aspect of my life. And just like others said, my intentions here today are to make sure that moving forward as a city, we have all the services we need provided as well as being equitable for everyone who's here and everyone who's not here and making sure that we're keeping our future and sustainability at the front of our minds and making sure we have a great city for all. And I will toss it over to Kent.
Thank you, Youth Counselor. Good afternoon. My bumper sticker, I have a lot of bumper stickers, so I will not share all them all, but the one that comes to mind is being fearlessly authentic. I think in government sometimes that's not always what we do. And I think if we're, we're not going to be perfect all the time, but at least we're authentic about what we're trying to do, authentic and transparent about it. And my goal today really is to, to learn more about actions behind, we've talked a lot about being an inclusive community. And what, but what does that look like? How do we have that represented in our boards, commissions, elected officials, staff? There's a lot of work to be done in that area and I think there's a lot of expectations for us. And so to embrace this opportunity to move those forward. So let's see, I'm going to go with Nadine. I'm going to call on Nadine next.
Thanks, Kent. So even though I did grow up in the age of bumper stickers, I don't have any. If I was going to make one up, I would say let's keep moving. And I, I like that just because it can encompass any part of your life and it's whether it's lifelong learning or being active, engaging with people. I just, I love it. I love the idea of having a life that's full. And so moving kind of encompasses that for me. And then in terms of intentions for today, it would be to be a hundred percent present as we discussed where the city's headed. And to leave the meeting today a hundred percent committed to helping those goals move forward over the next two years. And I will send it to Toby.
Thank you, Nadine. So I, I will share the, the one and only bumper sticker. And part of the reason when I like the bumper sticker too, it's actually a magnet bumper sticker because I don't like sticky bumper stickers. On my car, I actually have a bumper sticker that says, just made the Kessel Run in 12 parsecs. So for those of you that are Star Star Wars people, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Can you repeat, can you repeat your bumper sticker?
Just made the Kessel Run in 12 parsecs. So if you're Star Wars people, you know what I'm talking about. In terms of my intention today, it, it's, my intention today is the sort, is my intention, I think, for my job every day and for the whole reason I got into this profession, which is to be helpful. And so I know council has a lot of work to do and anything I can do to help council through that process today. Happy to do it, happy to be here. And so we're starting to run lower on number of people. I believe Council President Lou, have you gone yet?
No, I haven't.
Okay, pass it off to you.
Thanks, Toby. I think I'd like to start with my intention and it's, you know, for us to come together to be community focused and to have a clear vision for the city of Tigard. That's really important for me to come away from. And then, you know, kind of like Kenny, my sticker would be go ducks. I have the O on my car and that's about it. But I'd actually like to reference, I think, a lawn sign that I have currently in my lawn and it goes to being community focused and thinking about all members of our community. And it's that, you know, science is real, black lives matter, no human is illegal, love is love. Women's rights are human rights and kindness is everything. And to really lead with those ideals when we're thinking about the community and, and what kind of community we want to live in. So that would be my, my bumper sticker slash yard sign. And with that, I will tag Kathy.
Good afternoon, everyone. I too will start with the intentions. So my intention is just to be helpful and to move, to move us forward and help lift community up and our performance up and each other up. As far as bumper stickers, I am in the camp of nothing is on my car. Like I wash it every day, like it's clean. I never drive it, but I don't have any bumper stickers, but I do carry this little card in my wallet. I have about six of them that I pass out. And it says, everyone has a voice. It's our job to hear them. So if I were to make a bumper sticker, which I know would never do, that would be it. So I will pick Mr. Mayor, I don't believe you've gone yet, have you? There you go.
All right, I'll do my intentions first. You know, I want to reflect on the recent past. I want to hear particularly from new members of the council and the leadership team about, you know, their, their new goals and perspectives, things maybe I haven't heard before. I also want to recognize as we're having this conversation today, it's my intention to make sure that I'm reflecting and recognizing on the significant social change and transformation around many things that are, are, I think, changing more rapidly in society and in our community than they have in decades or even longer. The last year has been, you know, one like that. And I think it's really important that we're reflecting on that as we're thinking through our goals. In a lot of ways, COVID has really exacerbated a lot of inequality issues that are, were already present in our community and, and further separating people that have a lot of resources from those that don't. And that shows up in social inequality, racial inequality, injustice in general, healthcare outcomes, educational outcomes, et cetera. And I think we just need to be really aware, and I need to be really aware, and it's my intent to, today, to make sure that all of that is part of the lens that I'm looking through as we're, as we're working and thinking about the, the next couple of years in Tigard. My bumper sticker, I'm going to go with, you have two ears and one mouth for a reason, use them in that proportion.
All right, let's see. Who have we not heard from yet? Dana, Brian and Shelby. Okay, Dana, why don't you go ahead and go next and then we'll hear from Brian and then Shelby.
Okay, thanks. My bumper sticker would be, a small change can make a big difference. And to me, that means so much in local government because the kinds of things we want to do and accomplish are so big. And sometimes they feel insurmountable to the directors, to council, to the community probably. And so I like that focus of, sometimes you just got to take a small bite and keep, keep moving. It's back to Nadine's keep moving forward notion. But, you know, if you keep at it, small, small things will add up to big things. And in terms of my intention today, I do what I always do, which is I look for a place that I can add value. I look for ways I can add value to this, to today's events as well as to the city and to our community. And I will pick Brian.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My intentions today, I want to listen well. I want to offer input when I'm, when asked and when is the right time and share information as we, as we have our discussion. You won't find a bumper sticker on my car either. But when I was thinking about this, I think about, you know, my role here and, and the role of our, our department and really all of our role really. And that is, we are stewards of the community's investment. And that's, that's how we, we think about our work every day.
All right, thank you, Brian. Shelby, last but not least, of course.
No, Steve hasn't gone either.
He hasn't gone either, okay.
Okay, so my intention would be understanding and consistency. I think that if successful today, we will all have a shared understanding and consistency about where we're headed and how we get there. I, like many others, am not a fan of bumper stickers. But I think mine would say my other car is a monster truck. I think that comes to mind because it's ridiculous. It makes me laugh. But I think it also goes to facades and to not judge by first impressions.
All right, love it. Thanks, Shelby. Okay, Steve. Not least, but maybe last.
Yeah, well, last one to join the team, so it's, it's kind of perfect. So I think Shelby's is because if you've ever seen her negotiate, she has a monster truck, so it's perfect. So I took a little, not quite as literally, more symbolically, my personal bumper sticker, not caring about my car. Fun is a way of life. I'd say it's my own bumper sticker. My intent is to really get to know everyone a little better. I think this is a great opportunity, you know, being here just a couple of months now. Pretty fortunate to be able to go through a goal setting advance, you know, really early on. So I'm just really want to learn more. And then my secondary intention is to convert as many as you as possible to the word teammate. So we're going to slowly, Sarah, you're included in that. So we'll slowly see how we do throughout the day. So that's it.
All right, thanks, Steve. That was one of my intentions before I logged on today to really focus in on, this is a team. And I think that's going to come up multiple times throughout our conversation. So I'm, the perfect timing to have you go last and, and remind us all of that is that we are a team in this effort today. And I didn't share my bumper sticker at the beginning, I'm sorry. Mine, I, I also don't have any bumper stickers on my car, which I think is why I like this activity because it's like you imagine what you might put on there if you, if you were to be a bumper sticker person. But I think one that I've been reflecting on recently is just progress, not perfection. And so I think that even comes to mind today. We're going to make great progress. Then it may feel a little clumsy at times because there's a bunch of humans involved in this exercise and we're all imperfectly perfect in our own ways. So we will, we will move through this together. And, and just know that we have this agenda laid out, but I also embrace being flexible because again, we're, we're out to set a defined list of outcomes here. And so if we need to add some flexibility to how we structure these conversations, I, I welcome those suggestions and we are a team today and how we're going to move through this exercise. So please, please know that that's, I am very collaborative in the way I facilitate and work through this effort. So just keep that in mind. All right. Thank you for sharing those intentions. I think we are ready to jump into our next piece here, which is about looking back and then looking ahead. So let's talk about some of our 2020 accomplishments. I'm going to go back to our screen share. So you can see, I asked staff, so council, I don't think we talked about this. I asked, I already did it. So I asked the leadership team, some of our fellow teammates here, to talk about some of the accomplishments that they're really proud of when I surveyed all of them. So I have a great list here to share with you that they came up with. And I'm going to zoom in on that so you all can see it. And so let's just take a moment. So we've got some, there's a lot of things on this list that are relevant to the shifts and transitions made due to COVID and, and the pandemic. And I think it's just kind of amazing if you look at all of these, there's, there's quite a few. So just progress on goal areas and the work in downtown, the Tiger Triangle, River Terrace, Washington Square, innovation that sprung up as a result of COVID pressures. How the PD responded to the pandemic and outreach during, during this time and transparency work after George Floyd. There's been, and your DEI work, you guys have already begun to track some of the minority women owned emerging small business. I'm not sure what all of those acronyms stand for, but I think I've got the, the majority of them. You've provided a lot of technology solutions for internal teams in the midst of the pandemic to keep everybody working, working remotely. You've developed partnerships with local organizations to, to focus on those when minority women owned small businesses, utility billing, customer service and multiple language accounting for millions of federal relief CARES Act funding, expanding utility aid programs. The Tigard Library has continued to serve the community throughout COVID-19. This procurement, procurement and implementation of total Tyler Enterprise Resource Planning System, a lot of staff member or a lot of team members had that listed in as, as just an accomplishment that they're really proud of and something that's, that's really big and important to the city that's underway. Expanding court services, providing hearings by phone. Recruitment for Parks and Rec and Green Infrastructure Manager and the New Recreation Coordinator, completion of a city hall remodel. So there's lots of things on here that you can read. I just highlighted, highlighted a few. Oh, and successful passage of a police services levy. That one was mentioned multiple times in the staff survey. So lots of accomplishments. Is there anything that the council would like to add, things that you don't see maybe on these, these virtual sticky notes here that, that you'd like to recognize the team for or that you're particularly proud of? Yeah, Councilor Newton?
Well, as you were starting to talk about that, I thought about, well, the creation of the, of the Public Safety Advisory Board. You know, I thought about that. I also wanted to just express my appreciation to the team for everything they've done to pivot so well on all the stuff that we've done to address the the effects of COVID on our community. I mean, they've done a stellar job. All the, the grants that we did for businesses, the utility assistance, just everything that we did as quickly as we did on that. And then of course, I was going to also note the passage of the Public Safety Bond. So those are my quick three.
Thank you. Others? Any other accomplishments we want to recognize? This is a great list. You guys have done, done quite a bit and kept your organization running and providing great services to your community. Yeah, Councilor Goodhouse?
I, I think it's a, it's a catchall, but I think really the whole scope of everything that has been done as a city, as a, as staff, as departments. We have so many moving parts. We've grown so much as a city. We're involved in so many areas. And to be able to track all of it, handle all of it, do evolve it and stay in touch with our community. I think a catchall, a- as you kind of alluded to start this off as a teamwork, just how the, the city has been able to do a whole lot and, and approach and, and get a lot done throughout the city.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Goodhouse. Yeah, Mayor Snyder?
I'm just looking at the, I'm trying to make sure I'm not repeating something. I didn't see this specifically, but I could be missing it. And that is that I'm I'm really proud over the last couple of years, what both the council and teammates have done to make and really elevate our community engagement efforts to a point where the community really notices it. I mean, I hear that's probably, especially from people who maybe don't agree with the council, the majority of the council, or even just me from a political standpoint. All of them cat, like, there's no one that doesn't recognize the efforts that we've put towards connecting, outreach, reaching and listening to people, even if they don't share our opinions. And I don't think that's easy to, like, when I reflect back on things that are, like, changes that are really hard to make, that kind of a change to me is really hard to make. And, you know, some of that started before the council two years ago. But I think we've really, you know, pushed it at a different pace and a different set of expectations for both the community, the, all of our teammates and the council itself. So was that reflected? Am I just repeating something? Sorry.
No, I think that's a, a great reflection of something you guys have worked really hard at. So thank you for sharing and recognizing. Any others that the team would like to celebrate or recognize? Again, the purpose of this exercise is not only to give some recognition to the team, but also kind of prime the mind with success. You guys have done a lot of good work and we want to think about the good work that's on the horizon. So by just celebrating a few of these things, it starts to get us thinking in that success mindset. Any others that you'd like to mention? All right. Well, you can all do, give yourselves a round of applause for the great work that's been done. And feel free, if you want to use the reactions in Zoom, you know, you can, you can celebrate that way, too. All right. I'm gonna, before I stop our share, actually, I'm going to go over our next piece of this. So that's kind of looking back on what we did. The next thing is just looking forward. And you guys have done a lot of great work on thinking about what your vision is for Tigerd over, over the coming years and, and where the direction that you're headed. And so I just went ahead and placed this vision statement into our graphic here. Is that Tigerd's an equitable community that is walkable, healthy and accessible for everyone. So as we think about our intentions, our personal intentions, I think this is kind of an overall intention for the city, your vision. It's, it's the direction we're headed. So as we think about goal setting and the work we're going to do today, we want to make sure we stay in alignment with that vision. All right. And next up, we are going to do our context mapping exercise. So before I share that graphic, again, this is all done as part of, I put this initial graphic together as part of the information I gathered from the staff inter, or from the council interviews and from the staff surveys. And so I was able to glean some insights to get us started. But as we walk through these and share, I, I welcome you to just jump in and let's think about ways to, to add to this context. This is, the purpose of this is to get us all on the same page. This is our shared understanding of where we currently are and thinking about some opportunities or challenges for the future that we might, we want to make sure that we think about our, that we're thinking about during the goal setting piece. So let's shift us over to our context. Go back to our mural board here. So before we jump into this, one important piece of the context, you guys, I was looking through all of the great materials that Kathy sent over. But I thought this was really helpful in thinking about how all of these different pieces fit together. You guys had this graphic in one of your, your goal updates, I believe. And, and then I just pulled this straight from your strategic plan. So first of all, you have these great strategic priorities. And so I just want to, I wanted to put those front and center. Setting, setting the standard for excellence in public service and customer experience. Create a well-connected, attractive and accessible pedestrian network and ensure development and growth. Ensure that development and growth support the vision. And you have all of these various plans. You have your strategic plan here at the top that provides that guidance for the next five plus years. Then you have your department strategic plans and master plans. Then council goals that we're doing today, which is a two-year document, which then helped to establish those department work plans, division goals and individual goals that are all set on an annual basis. So just keeping in mind kind of how these pieces fit together. Steve, anything that you want to mention about that? I, again, I know this is kind of fits into how you guys work as an organization.
I think at this point, thanks.
So the next piece of this is I have this giant concept map and we're going to, our context map. And we're going to go through it piece by piece, but I just want to orient you to the various pieces of it first. So over here is where I've kept, and what I think is impressive about this is when we talk, there are far more opportunities that you mentioned than there are challenges. And there may be some overlap throughout these, but that's a pretty big, broad list to be thinking about. So we'll, we'll walk through and take a look at those. I'll zoom in on them in a moment. And then we've got challenges over here. Another thing I think when we're setting the context, that's important to think about that impacts how we set goals is thinking about what the economic climate's going to be looking like. And we'll have some, there were a couple of comments that came up related to economic climate. And if there's any others that you all want to raise, we can have some conversation around that. I also have an area in here for uncertainties. Again, we, you know, we can't name all of the uncertainties. Last year, when I was doing goal setting with cities, we had no idea what 2020 had on the horizon. That certainly was not an uncertainty that was listed. But again, it's good to at least be thoughtful about some uncertainties that might be out there because as you're goal setting, you might be able to plan or mitigate how you might manage those things. Uh, let's see. Technology is another one that sometimes gets forgotten, but it's, it's so important in how we do our work. And I think this year is really important in as far as community expectations. What's that going to look like for the future? What kind of technology is going to support the services that you deliver in, in a way that the community expects? I think people have really embraced technology over the last year. And so thinking about maybe some of the impacts there, it's been, it's been an important topic in goal setting this year especially. Political factors, there's always, you know, being a governmental body, there's always some politics at play. And so again, thinking about what those are and how it might, how we need to think about that as part of the big picture as we think about goal setting. And then just another, an area, kind of a catchall for any other community trends that come up as we think about the context. So those are our categories. At the top here, we have your four strategic areas that you've been working on. So again, I think it's good to keep those front of mind. All right. So let's, let's start, let's start with our challenges. Get those out of the way first. So some of the things I heard in your interviews and in the, the staff or the team survey, just around Washington Square Regional Center plans, been, you know, is, is there anything there that needs to pause? Communication, social media engaged, but we don't always follow up. Funding part and, and it's a challenge specifically within park maintenance. COVID recovery, how are we going to reopen? Transportation, the Southwest Corridor measure failed. And how, how are you guys going to address maybe some solutions there without that funding? Addressing racial justice and police reform. You guys have been doing a lot in that area, but what is there more? Just ensuring alignment between the plans. Homelessness and mental illness. We can't fleece our way out of, out of this challenge. Building meaningful relationships with the Latinx and other historically underserved communities. This one could go here in challenges and uncertainties, but establishing a new normal. What's that going to look like and understanding that things aren't going to just go back to the way they are? And how's our focus going to shift? And then reintegrating employees and team members to that in-person status is going to be a big challenge. And then finally, another one that came up was just developing a better position or plan for homeless community members. So as you think and reflect on those challenges, is there anything else that comes to mind that you, that you find important to add to that list as we think about the context? Does that capture everything? Yeah, Councilor Goodhouse?
I'm just trying to kind of look at everything. I think one of the ones I brought up was more of the opening up the contracting process we do to open up more to minorities. And, and maybe that's in there, but to minorities and, or women owned business or those ones that maybe that are not build a bid on the contracts the city offers to change the contracting process. And then another challenge I would say would be to have a more of a, more of a interaction or communication between the, the city and the, and downtown and Tigerd as far as a, some kind of a process that there's kind of a one point of contact between what's going on on a regular basis. As, as a downtown grows, that seems to be kind of siloed projects or different departments. But if there's one contact person that then can interact with all of downtown and regularly see what's going on, I think that would be a catchall that would see from homelessness to parking, to development, to issues. There would be a free, open line of communication both ways.
Okay, thank you. Other, other challenges? We can come back to this area too, but if something comes to mind now, let me know. Yeah, Councilor Shaw?
I would just add, if there's any federal, probably more likely state unfunded, unfunded mandates or items that we're going to be responsible for, but yet not have funding for or to do. None of, there was a funding category that looked like it was more geared to park maintenance and maybe city, but that could be important.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, Chief McAlpine?
Our challenges with our facilities and that infrastructure, that's just not an easy fix and it appears to be. But they're clearly in the next two years, a significant challenge for us.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Councilor Goodhouse, you have one more?
And I'm still kind of lost on how this process that we're doing. So I, that's why I'll just throw them out there. I know that from our past goals, we've had an issue still of somehow probably after COVID, starting back up the conversation with the Bull Mountain residents on, on any kind of future annexation. I know that's a challenge that's still lingering out there, but it's been put on, put on hold due to COVID. And then, um, from recent conversations from, from councils with River Terrace Southwest, working with Metro and doing, um, bringing that into the urban growth boundary and, and work on the conversation of what to do with future expansion into those areas and developing that area out there. And I would say one last one would be with our, our park maintenance. I know that's been a big hurdle over the last decade or more of how, how to really properly fund our park maintenance, but also communicate to the residents on, on our fees and fee schedules and, and what we need to do with our, with our routing budget and having our low tax rate.
Sarah, I feel like I'm, this is Jason, I'm lost in where we're at right now. I mean, I, half of what was just said, I don't even know are actual challenges. But have we reviewed and gone through the opportunities in the same way? Or were you, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm lost in the process now because there's things I'd want to add to opportunities. But I've, I thought we're orienting to it. I, I just am lost. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Let's, so we're covering challenges to make sure that we've captured all of those. And then we're going to shift over into opportunities next.
Okay. Because some of what I think was just said are, some of those are actually opportunities. But I, I just, okay, so you, we, we, you re, you reviewed some part on the left. What was the part on the left we already reviewed?
The, just, we haven't reviewed any of those in specific, specifically. We just talked about just the, we, we were just starting this, so to go through. So why don't we just take a look at opportunities here for just a moment? And, and see what's up there because there may be some, some duplicates. And we can make sure we get stuff mapped out in the right spot.
Well, and, and before we do, I mean, even the, like, what, weren't some of the things that were just listed already in the challenges? I mean, or, and maybe we're just brainstorming now, but like park maintenance was specifically called out as a challenge earlier.
It was. And so I, it's already in there. We mentioned the, the funding park maintenance. And so I just, as, as he was talking, I just captured it again.
All right. I'm just trying to follow, follow where we're headed with this. Okay.
So again, just trying to, the whole goal here is to have a shared understanding before we move into the goal setting. So opportunities that came up through the outreach. Environmentally conscious and becoming a sustainable, becoming a sustainable city, developing a climate action plan. So you could examine function, their city functions, electrification, equipment replacement, building codes, et cetera, and put, and put a climate action plan in place. The Public Safety Advisory Committee. So, you know, they're looking at things like body cameras, changing cars and uniforms to soften the look, alternate, alternate response to 911 calls for mental health, hiring practices, policies. So those are some of the opportunities there with that group. COVID, recognizing that a lot's been done, but making sure resources continue to be available for things like grants, utility assistance. Being clear about how things are being funded. There's some concerns around use of utility fees and, and so just being really transparent regarding communication. Just the need to engage the community. Communication plans could focus on the messaging versus the tools and having the data in detail on our website and information available, but key messages should be the, the focus and the most important part and, and having a clear call to action. We already touched on this, but DEI and the contracting process, making it more accessible for minority women owned small emerging businesses. Focus on employee engagement and building a leadership program to help build the bank, the bench strength of our teams. Going to shift up here to the top, transportation. So what you guys are landlocked by three major highways and need to figure out some sort of solution for this issue. An opportunity recognized is to be able to incentivize different employment opportunities in Tigerd. And how to, you know, if we have local job opportunities, could that help to alleviate congestion? In urban renewal. So again, this was some of the stuff. I think this is a chat, some of these things are challenges and opportunities. So you have the Tiger Triangle, River Terrace, Washington Square, Bull Mountain Annexation. Some of this was delayed due to COVID, but there's big opportunity here. Solving the city facilities issue. So using the, a smaller footprint and being able to use that existing footprint to add some affordable housing. There's a sidewalk gap bond to fund sidewalks that are needed to help you guys be the most walkable city. Parks and trails are a big priority. You guys are in the midst of a parks master plan update. Continued collaboration with social service providers. There's an opportunity for South City's Mental Health Response Team. Another opportunity, creating a long-term strategy for communication and engagement that includes internal resources to build relationships. Tyler, we mentioned this earlier in staff accomplishments, but it's a critical project for long-term success of the city. Let's see. Just an opportunity for understanding. And this is just one to kind of think about big picture, understanding that when everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So want to be really focused in how, how we think about this context and the goals going forward. Opportunity, just with the library, it will continue to serve as a community hub, especially as things start to open back up. Another big opportunity, the May Levy, if it passes for urban renewal, it will increase the city's max indebtedness. And you guys will have a lot of opportunity to do work in the Tiger Triangle and downtown Tigerd. Let's see. And I think that was everything. Those were the, the big themes. There were some other one-offs that I heard in the outreach, but those were the themes that I heard over and over again. So those are the ones that are listed here. Any other, any other opportunities that you guys would like to add that weren't covered in that rather long list? Mayor, did you have another one that you wanted to include?
Well, the, I think the, it might be an addition or a, a little bit of a shift in the way to think about the Bull Mountain annexation conversations or Bull Mountain, what does the future of Bull Mountain look like and outreach there? And that's because the county, I think it's becoming more and more clear that the, that the county realizes that they really are not able to provide urban services. And so they're going to be, I think, in the next few years, pushing all of the unincorporated urban areas. You know, pushing in discussions with communities like Tigerd, Hillsborough and Beaverton about the areas that are immediately around them that, you know, have been planned to eventually end up in cities. And I think the, the county is just at a point where that conversation's going to be more, well, i- it's going to become an imperative from the county perspective because they just can't do it. Or they're not going to continue to be able to do it. So where that was maybe, you know, more of a choice in the past, I'm not sure from the, from the county service delivery perspective, that's going to be able to continue being a choice.
Okay, thank you. Added, added that. Good perspective. Any other opportunities that we haven't covered that you want to make sure are considered? Yeah, Councilor Goodhouse?
I'm still trying to kind of process this all too and catch up with it while it's all flying out there. And with the recent passage of the ARP on the federal level, with the money that's going to be coming to the city, I don't know, with an opportunity, how we're looking at that with a million coming to city and how we work and use that. And that's going to be, have to be spent by, what, December 31st, 2024? But we have a lot of opportunities to look at that. But what we do with transportation or what we do with lasting infrastructure or, you know, green technology, electric technology or so forth of that. But that's a huge opportunity of going forward and looking at that. And I think another opportunity too would be with, um. Uh, with a congressman from our, our state being with the transportation future funding, what we can do for some kind of a future transportation. Package that would be either for orphaned highways or for infrastructure or bridges or, or light rail.
All right, Mayor, we'll kick you out for a second, but.
I was going to add the federal one too. So thank you, Counselor Goodhouse, for bringing that up. That was my second.
I'm going to add, I'm also going to add that under, uh, political factors, Counselor Goodhouse, the one you just mentioned that there's a, the. Congress, the representation on the transportation committee. Sorry, I missed part of that.
Congressman DeFazio with, with having one or with him being the chair. Um, that's, that's a huge plus for us being in Oregon, be able to have a, have one of our own that we can reach out to.
Okay.
And I think if we're, this one, I guess while my mic's open and we're on political factors, I think just also taking advantage of all of our. As a whole of our council and, and our abilities to really leverage our connections we have and. And roles we have to be able to get more for the city.
Okay, thank you. Any other opportunities? And that anybody would like to comment on or even political factors since we've kind of shifted conversation over to that area? All right, what about, uh, what about any economic factors that we should consider? There was one that came up in the outreach of just that the budget is always a concern, is always an issue. And, you know, how do we effectively communicate to people what the city provides? You know, that there's an expectation that, or how can the budget support community expectations? Services aren't free. And so, um, how do we communicate that? So just keeping that, keeping that in mind. But any other economic, economic things that we should be thinking about? Yeah, Counselor Newton?
I'm not sure this fits here, but I'll bring it up here anyway. I'm hearing from a lot of community members that are telling me they're slowly slipping behind. Now I'm taking advantage of all the programs I, that are out there. I can pay my mortgage, but now I'm not able to pay my garbage bill. I'm slipping behind five dollars, $10, $20 every month over a year. I'm kind of slipping behind and I think that's really stressful for people in the community. So to get. To think about that as we're thinking about what our priorities are and. Um, you know, how we want to, we might want to communicate with folks. I just think we need to keep that in the back of our minds. There, this is sort of slow erosion and a little worry about when am I going to be able to kind of. Get, get back to where I'm not worried about this month after month. So. I don't think it's everybody in the community, but I'm hearing about it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Newton. Uh, Mayor Snyder, and then Counselor Calderon.
I would say, you know, the impacts, I think if we're not thinking about the impacts of COVID. On the economy right now, we're missing some important stuff. So I would at least. Uh, put that and, and what that's going to mean. And frankly, the. There are a lot of people that owe a lot of back rent. And, um. When that all comes due. It is going, or it's all due, but when it comes due in the form of. Uh, evictions being permitted again. And the eviction moratorium ends, like, there's just going to be a. There's, I want to say a rude awakening. There's going to, there's going to be like a, a moment where I, I'm just afraid things are going to get really ugly. From an economic standpoint and a homelessness standpoint around this that all started with the pandemic, but. You know, again, was already challenging. I mean, there were a lot of people that were housed, housing insecure. Going into the pandemic and then the pandemic has just, you know, made that worse.
Okay, yeah, definitely an important piece to be thinking about. Uh, Counselor Calderon and then Counselor Shaw?
Yeah, I was just going to mention what, uh, Mayor Snyder just said with the eviction moratorium. That would be another important part, but. Uh, it was already mentioned, but just to make sure we put it under here. Is that the money we're getting from the federal government from the American Rescue Plan? That's. Uh, good portion of money that we can hopefully use to help our community. And I just want to make sure we remember that.
Thank you. Yes, have that there. Counselor Shaw?
Thank you. And, um, I don't know if this would be a friendly amendment to the mayor's, uh, bullet or just an addition, but. I know there's a lot of landlords out there too, who have been trouble making their own mortgages. And fear is that if they lose their buildings, then they'll also lose, um, the housing that's provided to their renters. And so some sort of. That's a concern as well.
Okay. Any other economic pieces that we need to keep in mind? Yes, Counselor Goodhouse?
One part of the economic and I, um, um, the other day I was on the, with the family promise on the board of directors and they were talking about the running into a lot of people that don't know what the resources are out there. And they're having landlords will say that it's better for you to leave now and not cure any more debt. And once they move out, what happens is a lot of these resources are, they're out there to help with back rent. Once they're no longer in that, they can't help them with those, those back rents. So the city doesn't have to necessarily always fund all this, but there's, I think there's a lot of information, a lot of resources, a lot of. You know, processes the city can help with, whether we hold a forum to go over it with people, we, we figure out a way to send the information out, but. There's a lot of resources out there too, that even with people that. Um, with Medicare, um, health plans where there's, there's things and services that can help them with their. Insurance or car repairs or things. There's a lot of resources out there. So if the city took more of an action of. Providing the information for people that either are struggling or maybe having back rent of where they can go and how they can do it. I think would be a great, uh, economic factor. Um, and then since the, um, and I'm probably jumping to a different square, their thing with the ARP.
Before you jump to a different square, can I put, can I put you on pause there for a second? Because I think Council President Lou has one for, for this square. So we'll come, we'll come back to you as soon as we wrap up the economic pieces. Yeah, Council President Lou?
Yeah, I, I think it just ties into a lot of what we've been talking about that, you know, the estimates are that we are not going to get to pre-COVID employment levels until 2023. And that's an important thing to remember as well. A lot of people are still going to struggle. As different industries start to come back, especially hospitality and restaurants. You know, those are the ones struggling the most and people are going to, it's going to take a while to rebuild those. So just to keep in mind that, you know, even though some people are. Are doing well and doing fine, there's also going to be a lot of people who struggle for a really long time on, on top of. You know, our issues of the eviction and, and rent payments and mortgage payments.
Yeah, that's an important one to mention. Mayor Snyder, did you have another one for economic climate or is that just leftover? Okay. Anything else on economic climate where we move on? All right, let's jump back to Counselor Goodhouse and, uh, share what your comment was. It might take us to a different area here.
Just with the, this maybe refresh on the ARP and from our conversations on Hill Day last week was, um. And with the League Oregon Cities was to, um, set up some kind of a. Um, similar what we've done with the police levy is a, as a, as a part of our website that shows how we're using the money, what we're doing with that money. Everything we've invested in. So there'd be a resource where they can see what we're doing and not only for our citizens, but also for the, the federal legislators that passed it. Um, and one other thing I thought in the, this, I'm not sure which box this goes into and maybe I've missed it in the whole. Mixer thing, but I know we've talked in the past about looking at doing a gas tax increase. And so I don't know if that's something that we'd want to look at the next two years again, if that even falls in anywhere.
Um, I'll go ahead and put that down here. As a possible opportunity. Okay, um, anything else relate? And then the ones we haven't covered yet are, is there anything in the realm of technology? Uh, that we should be thinking about as we go into goal setting? And how technologies may be either supporting the organization, organizational needs or community needs? Anything anybody wants to raise here? Yeah, Counselor Shaw, please.
Like the wonderful work that the, um, team and staff are doing on, um, Tyler, Total Tyler.
Okay. Counselor Newton?
Yeah, I think, um, I was going to mention that, but I also think we, as we move toward more. Um, online services, we have to think about the fact that not everybody is in the community is well served that way. So encouraging folks to do that because I think it's more efficient in most cases is a good thing, but. Some people, you know, that just doesn't work. So we need to think about, they don't have access or. They're, you know, it just doesn't work for them. So just as we're developing that, it is a more efficient platform, but we need to think about. Service delivery generally and if there's another, other needs in terms of reaching folks.
That's a great word. All right, any others related to technology? Okay, um, let's see, what about? What about any other uncertainties? There was one that came up in the outreach, just, you know, you guys have been in pandemic mode for over a year and likely will not understand the full impacts for years to come. And so just somehow trying to be mindful of that, be as prepared as you can be for it. Any other uncertainties? That we should consider? Yeah, Steve?
Kind of a higher level uncertainty, but just from a capacity standpoint. You know, will we have the, both the teammate as well as the financial capacity? You know, to advance everything that we're talking about. And that's why obviously the prioritization is so important. To make sure that we realize what are the main priorities so we can align our resources accordingly.
Yes, always, always the one that comes into play once we get into that prioritization exercise. Okay, any other uncertainties that we should be aware of? Yeah, Council President Lou?
I think just the uncertainty of how, you know, as vaccines roll out and things start to open up. What that is going to look like for us as a city as we continue to open services? And what, if there are any new or changed needs. Um, I would say that, you know, I don't think it's going to go back to business as usual. So different things like there's a bill right now in the Oregon House to allow cities. To continue to hold meetings in some sort of virtual capacity. So that is an opportunity and an uncertainty for us of what that might look like for council meetings in the future or things like that. And so just. How everything continues to open up.
Yeah, that's a, a good one to be considering. Yeah, Chief McAlpine?
Uh, also just, uh, how we police, whether you want to do a broad, uh, public safety or policing, but. There's over a thousand legislative motions going on and discussing. And we know there'll be some significant changes, but the uncertainty is really what the impact is. And. You know, it could be a great thing. It could be. You know, uh, those that view, view it as a slippery slope. For example, just as a, more to add context to it. You, you know, on homeless, yes, we, we've decriminalized it as we should. Uh, but there's a good portion of our community that thinks we should be. Policing and cleaning up these encampments, that we should be enforcing things and those laws are long, long gone. And so. Educating our community on what our capabilities are and it'll be very similar to policing, just drugs and all of that. Legalizing portions of that and what the outcomes are. We, we don't know what the outcomes are. It's very uncertain times.
Uh, yeah, and again, another important uncertainty. It's kind of, that's kind of a theme that's come up in a couple of areas as, as far as that example goes homelessness and, and how that's going to play out. All right, any others? Counselor Goodhouse?
One kind of just uncertainty we've seen, I think especially during some of these times is. As a, as a whole, who, how, how we communicate as a city and how we respond to with things, whether or not it be from different departments, whether it be a. You know, with the officer involved shooting, whether it has to do something with water, do we have a, you know, have a, do we need to have a dedicated comms person that's for the city that. You know, encompasses all departments and council and all aspects, or how do we, you know, do we have a certain process that we. As a whole, rather than being kind of each area separate as far as how it communicates. So we have like a whole. Just set dedicated communication strategies or a comms person or something.
Yeah, I think some of that will come up today. I think part of that also is going to play into your council ground rules. Um, where we'll have some, just a little bit of discussion around that tomorrow as well.
And I think it's not just for the council, but I don't know if it's something that, you know, does, does, you know, police handle police matters? Does. Public Works handle public works matters? Or do we have a dedicated? City communication person that handles all those and, and can be that face that comes out and, and updates on issues that are going on.
Okay.
Eric, does that belong more in challenges or is the, I guess I'm like, it doesn't quite, that one doesn't quite seem like an uncertainty to me. It's a thing, but. I'm just, or does it matter where, what category it's in right now?
Um, again, it, it's, it, the whole idea is to get it mapped out. I don't want to get some, I, I try to never be a slave to the template. The templates to, to help generate discussion, but let's, we can stick it in both places because again, I think some of these. Could be in a variety of places. So I'll clean up the formatting on that in a bit, but we'll have it in both areas. Um, all right, any other community trends or things that haven't come up in any of these other categories that you want to make sure we mention and, and are thinking about as we go into the. Idea mapping and goal setting piece? Yeah, Counselor Shaw and then Mayor Snyder?
Thank you, Sarah. Just wondering, is this our one and only opportune time or will we? And I understand the purpose, this is going to help form our discussions, but should we think of something else? Is there an opportunity or? Or not, just for my context?
Yeah, this isn't, this is again, just to get everybody, everybody's minds thinking about the potential opportunities and challenges. Challenges that we want to keep in mind, but it's not limiting us. If it's not on this, certainly can, can still bring it up in a later conversation. So. Um, great, great question. Mayor Snyder?
I would say the other major community trend that I'm not sure is reflected elsewhere is. A likely dramatic increase in, uh, telecommuting or, or, you know, the permanent telecommuting and. Perhaps some significant change in the way. And where the workforce works, which both has transportation implications, infrastructure implications, I think even in. Down to the neighborhood level, um, you know, I think many people's. Uh, internet resources have been strained as, as multiple people are trying to do high bandwidth activities. And so that may mean that we need to be thinking differently about, for example, broadband, broadband infrastructure. So that, I think that's just a, a, a major community trend that's not. Probably isn't captured elsewhere. I know it was mentioned about teammates. But I think the community trend is even, you know, potentially has even major, more major implications.
Yeah, that's been a major, uh, topic of conversation in a lot of these goal settings with communities this year is the need for. More broadband capacity and just that change and shift. Um, Counselor Newton?
I was going to bring that one up, but I was also going to bring another one up, um, that might relate to how we communicate and engage with our community. People are pretty exhausted and, um, just with everything going on politically with COVID economically. And when I talk to them, they're interested in hearing about what the city's doing, but. More they want to be brought along. They want to sort of have time to, okay, this is what you're thinking as a city. This is what. Oh, okay, that might be a good idea. So I just think in terms of looking at how we communicate, we need to. Think about the fact that they're, they're pretty, getting pretty hit with a lot of stuff. And so how our message comes across. Um, I think, I think we need to be keeping that in mind. And I was also going to bring up what the mayor mentioned as well, so.
Okay, good. All right, any others? Okay, um, we have just a few more minutes left for this exercise. As you think about all this conversation that we've had around all of this context. Are there any major themes that jump out to you? One that I, that I heard that didn't come up as strongly in the council conversations, but you guys definitely raised it today and I heard it from stat, from the staff. Team and the leadership team as well, was just the, um, the challenge and, and paired with potential opportunities around homelessness. And, and, and the impacts of that. So that might be a theme that you keep in mind. Any other themes?
And Sarah, could we add mental illness in that? Because they, you know, sometimes they're not synonymous. they're not synonymous, and obviously, you know, what, what's police role in mental health? But also what resource is there, which is not in Tigard, so it's more Washington County? So we have little, perhaps a little control over that, but it's a huge topic right now and challenge.
Okay. Any other major themes that you heard? Yeah, Kenny?
Well, I don't know if it's a theme, but I want to make sure that we keep affordable housing, or just, let's just call it housing. We've got a homelessness issue, we've also got keeping people in homes, and we've also got keeping Tigard affordable to people at all stages of life, which is one of its, has always been one of its great strengths. And I think we would all hate to lose that quality in this community. So I don't know if that's a theme, but it probably, thanks for putting it up on the board.
Yeah, I don't think we've talked about it as much today, but it's, there's a lot of comments up there that are centered around as far as how the city grows and how that impacts housing. So thanks for, for raising it. Counselor Shaw?
Yes, Summer, I'm not so sure if this is a theme, but how to do things different post-COVID to both Counselor Newton and Mayor Snyder's point, just broadband's going to look different, internet access is going to look different, transportation needs are going to look different. So how do we be creative and innovative and can pivot quickly?
Yeah, I think that's a major theme throughout all of these categories. Any, any others jumping out to you? What about, the one that I've heard is not just how do you guys do things differently, but just being really mindful of the resource impacts and people's sensitive financial situation, whether it's personally, organizationally, and their businesses, and just being mindful of resource and capacity limitations. Would you guys say that that's a important theme to be considering? It's like, we want to do a lot, but there's, we also want to keep those limitations in mind.
Maybe to build off that, Sarah, of the theme is, if you go through all different sides of this chart, there's some very significant items that are on here that are, you know, multi-year, potentially multi-generational things, like homelessness and housing, and our environment, and large annexations, and you just go through the list. So I guess the theme is, how do you, you know, the balance of these large significant items that take a significant amount of resources and time, compared to some of the other things that are on there that are important to do, and how do you balance between the two? So theme or not, but maybe a takeaway for me.
Yeah, I, I think that's an important one. It's this, this goal setting is going to feel like a delicate balance of addressing really immediate critical needs while also still keeping your eye on the, the long-term projects and initiatives you have underway. All right, any others? Okay, we're just, we're almost right on track here. It's just, it's 1:37. So why don't we go ahead and take 10 minutes, take a break to stretch, refresh your drink, whatever you need to do. So feel free to turn off those cameras, and let's come back at, it's actually now 1:38. So let's come back at 1:48 to reconvene. All right, it is 1:48, so people should be slowly migrating back from the break. All right, we'll give everybody just a second to get their cameras back on, so we know they're here. All right, I'm waiting on just a few more to jump back in. So one thing, Steve and Kathy, during the break, I forwarded to you a PDF of the context map, and if you, yeah, great, if you, if you could send that along to the whole team here?
It's been sent. So everyone should have it in their inbox.
Thank you for doing that. So yeah, if you are on the mural board, you can zoom in and see everything that's on that context map, but if you're, if you're not, and you're just, you're just doing it via the, or looking at things via the screen share, I went ahead and exported that so that you can use it as a resource as you think about this next activity and the idea mapping. And so if you open it, it is, it's a PDF, but it's, it's a great PDF, you can zoom in. So if you try to look at the whole thing, it's going to look a little small, but if you want to zoom in on particular areas to refresh your memory about that conversation, that can be a help, a helpful tool to make sure you don't forget about any of these great ideas and opportunities that we talked about during that last discussion. Any final thoughts on context mapping before I share the instructions for our next activity here? There was one that came in over the chat, just about technology equals mobility, and so thinking about that ability to provide services from the field and alternative office locations, virtual public meetings, and then also thinking about how that, there could be a potential savings on office space cost. So that wasn't, it's not, you're not going to see it on the map yet, because I haven't added it in that draft version, but just keep that in mind as well. Okay, so the next activity here is the idea mapping exercise. And essentially, what this is, is a giant brainstorming. Now that we have this shared understanding of the context, I want you guys to, or I'm going to break you into small groups, and during your small groups, you're going to start to map out ideas of what you'd like to see for the goals for the future. So thinking about that context, go ahead and, and just generate all the ideas that you want, keeping all that, that context in mind for potential goals for consideration. Some people jump right into this and have tons of ideas, and others struggle and say, now, what do you want me to do again? So once I break you into your small groups, I will jump into your small group and come visit you in, in your virtual setting here, just to make sure that you don't have any questions, or you're not struggling to get started. But once you get rolling, it usually, it's hard to get people to get them to stop. So you will, we will have some time limitations on this. I think we'll start, we have an hour for this discussion, but we need to leave time for the debrief. So let's plan on 30 minutes of brainstorming in your small groups. And when we do the debrief, you guys are going to share all of your ideas, and we'll see what sort of themes emerge. One other instruction that I want to provide, so make sure that you designate somebody in your small group to be the recorder. So who's going to jot down all of those ideas? The easiest way to record the ideas, and then for me to get them on the mural board, is if somebody can type those up and either email them to me, or you can, you can put them in the chat, and I'll be able to pop them up on the mural board here pretty quickly. So make sure you designate that recorder right when you get started. Any questions about what we're doing? Yes, Counselor Newton?
So are we coming up with specific goals? Are we worried about how we word them, or is it just sort of more brainstorm, this is kind of the area, and this is the outcome?
Yes.
Don't worry about how it sounds as a goal, right?
Exactly. Yeah, don't get hung up, don't waste your time on, on wordsmithing the goals. We'll do, we'll work on that later. In fact, we're not going to do much wordsmithing at all today. We're going to make sure that we get some clarity, and on, tonight on the backend, I'll be doing some, trying to get some wordsmithing done for you guys to have a cleaner version to look at tomorrow, to just make sure you get all of your ideas out there. That's the most important piece of this exercise. One other thing that Counselor Newton's comment brought to mind for me, is that sometimes we think in different levels when we think of goal setting. Some people are really high level, and others might be thinking more of specific strategies. They're all good things to capture. So ultimately, when we put the goals together, we're going to have the high-level overarching goal, and then we'll also make sure that we understand the team's intent for how they want to see that goal move forward. So there'll be some supporting strategies that we'll also identify. So those are all worthy things to get on your brains, in your, get out in your brainstorming exercise. All right, with that, any other questions? Again, in your small groups, if you need support, message me, otherwise I'll be popping into each of them just to kind of see how you're doing. Okay, I'm going to go ahead, I tried to equally allocate the groups. Some of you are signed on with both your, your video and as well as called in, so I tried to make sure that I've assigned you to the same people to groups. So some of them may look a little bigger, but that's the only reason why. So I'm going to go ahead and open those. You have 30 minutes. I'll see you all soon. So I'm going to go ahead and open those. You have 30 minutes. I'll see you all soon. Oh, and Carol? And Carol, are you still there? I did not assign you. So I think you're just listening in.
I, that's true. Okay, yes, can you, can you hear me now?
I can, and I just wanted to make sure you didn't want to be in a group, but I think we're all, I think we're good.
I know, I'm, I'm just, I'll, I'm just observing and then I'll call roll at the end when they turn.
That sounds good. Thanks, Carol.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought there was the, I thought somehow the Zoom thing canceled out. And then, then other people in my office are knocking on doors saying that we lost internet here, so.
Okay, well, I'm going to put you back in your breakout group so you can jump back in on that conversation. Here you go. All right, you're back. I want to put you in the breakout group. There you go. Thank you. Hey Dana.
Hi, sorry, internet went down here. I'm at the beach and we had a big storm, so.
Oh, shoot, hold on. It looks like Counselor Shaw also got kicked out. What Dana, what group were you in? I'll put you back.
I was with Counselor Shaw, so maybe it was my group problem and not my internet, although my internet went down again.
Let's see, who else were you guys with?
Brian, Steve.
Brian and Steve, okay.
And Counselor Lube.
Was I the only one who got disconnected or was it all of us?
No, I got disconnected too.
Okay, whoa, my god, did my power go out? Well, I took notes, so I was gonna just.
Brian was talking and then he froze and then everything went down.
Okay.
Okay, I put you guys, you can head back into rooms if you want. You still have about seven, seven and a half minutes left. All right, you guys are efficient. First one's back.
Oh, nice.
Since you guys are Kent's group, since you guys are back first, do you want to send, we'll start with your report out. If you want to send me your comments, you can put them in the chat or you can email them, whatever is easier.
Okay, do you, I'll try to organize a little bit here and then I'll send you, just want me to email them?
Let me put, just so anybody who needs it, just put my email in the chat.
Sarah, while you were briefly in our room, we did assign you as the recorder from our room.
Oh, shoot, well, that's gonna be problematic.
You know, I'm kidding, right?
I know, I know, sorry, I'm like multiple, very, a lot of multitasking going on over here. Okay, we're gonna start because, let's see, our group two with Chief McAlpine, Kent and Counselor Newton and Nadine, they were back first, so we're gonna kick off with them. Kent is emailing his comments.
Yep.
And then others, if you want, I went ahead and put my email address in the chat if you want to send me those comments as well, once we get to yours. Okay, so I'm going to piece these up here. And all right, so why don't you guys talk us through what you came up with here? I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen so we can all look at what
good.
what the team included. All right, so just take a couple minutes and just kind of debrief us on your conversation. And as you're doing that, I am going to kind of sort these into this other graphic that I have. Please don't, anybody get stressed about where, how I allocate them for the time being. We're gonna move these things around quite a bit. So, so don't worry about that. We'll, we'll shift and move things throughout the conversation as we need to, to group them and be able to see those emerging themes. All right, so with that, go ahead and group, tell us a little bit about what you came up with.
Sarah, can I interrupt for one second? Is everyone back? I'm not seeing, I know people are having problems getting kicked off. I just want to make sure everyone's here before we start sharing all of our notes. Is Counselor Shaw on right now?
Oh, no, what, somebody? Hold on just a second, I gotta let me stop.
She's waiting in the lobby to be let in.
There we go. All right, let me get her back in here. And Toby, okay.
Thanks, sorry about that, Ken.
No, thank you for bringing that to my attention. All right, now I'm gonna go back to the share. Okay, group two.
Are you guys ready for us?
Take it away.
All right, so state the obvious, we were guided, our conversation was guided a lot by the strategic plan and those priorities we talked about earlier and that being the lens for what we do. So a few of those, oh, and I guess a couple of caveats to that, that we talked about with all these items is one, the importance of prioritization. The second, being aware and acknowledging community fatigue. So I think where that plays in with what you'll hear from us is just the need to be intentional on these bigger projects and when we line them up to go, when and where. So we don't have major projects on top of each other, they're spaced out just to avoid as much as possible the community fatigue. So onto the higher level items we talked about, first one was about community and neighborhood identity. In the recent months, we've heard more from community members about like the identity of Tigerd, what is it? The identity of my neighborhood, what is it? And so how can we build more of that? And by building that, hopefully, being able to align some of our communications and engagement around that. It really goes back to building those foundational relationships as opposed to building relationships around, here's another survey, can you fill it out? Secondly, we talked about homelessness and the impact of that on community services. One thought on that was, we did have a homelessness task force several years ago. Do we react, reactivate that as is? Do we call it something else? But do, at least being intentional about what our approach is, you know, it's something that from a staff level, at least, we hear about several times a week. And to be able to state, here's where we're going with this, here's what we have available would, would help in our communications and also help in folks understanding what those resources are that we have. Next, big topic was recovering from COVID, specifically about around businesses. And, you know, we hear about reopening and expanding services, but how can we be intentional about recognizing that not everybody is healthy just because they have a vaccine? There's financial health, emotional health, mental health, and the health of our small businesses, businesses in general. And that some of those great programs we did last year shouldn't stop. We should find other ways to continue to support the community and those that are in need. Next larger topic was around several kind of planning projects, River Terrace. The question around, one, the development of it, but also how will that advance our affordable housing plan? And then Washington Square Project Bull Mountain Annexation. Not necessarily one thing specific about it, but more of, if we're gonna go, if we're gonna proceed with this, being intentional about that timeline that we had. being intentional about that timeline that we have, uh, once again, going back to that community fatigue, trying to avoid that, uh, as much as possible. Uh, next, building foundational relationships with our underrepresented communities. Uh, an example that I shared is that we were in the process of delivering, or excuse me, developing a leadership program um, with Unite Oregon. And last couple of weeks ago, I was in a meeting and we talked about, well, hey, this is great. When the, when the program's over, how do we keep these folks engaged in our organization? And we really struggled to come up with great answers. And so thinking that all the way through, you know, are there internships programs, are there volunteer programs, board and committee openings, are there other creative ways to make sure that they're not, just not completing a program, but they stay involved in our community? And most, most importantly, uh, they have those meaningful relationships, um, with city staff and city council. Um, we didn't want to lose the thread on the CFC, the city facilities consolidation. It's a huge project, um, and that will continue to be something that will be on the minds of staff and elected officials. Um, our asset management system, something that's in the, in the works and continuing to work on that. And then we just kind of had, kind of on the other category, um, affordable housing, homelessness, COVID, those plans or actions, um, and in being, having approaches that we can clearly outline in the future. Um, so those were the main, well, that's, that's what, those were my notes, at least, uh, group. What, what did I miss from there? What else did we have?
Kent, I, I would add also, when we talk about the, I'm looking for priorities and we say, uh, the exhaustion of, of the community, I think it's also, uh, the employees. So when we talk about putting too much on the employees, on what they can accomplish, uh, being mindful, not only the community, but also the employees' fatigue.
Yep, good point.
Uh, this is Liz here, and I also thought we had a really good discussion. We looked at the four bubbles, I'll call them, are, that we talked about, um, earlier in, in the day, and had a really good discussion about the importance of looking at our priorities through those lens. And so some of the issues that Kent brought up, we were saying, okay, this is really something that, um, advances that issue. This is something, you know, we really should think about. So along the lines of making sure that we prioritize well, um, how do the priorities that we set, uh, resonate in advancing, um, the, the vision? And so for me, as a counselor, that was helpful to remember that as we set priorities and can articulate that to the community, to our team, um, you know, that's an important conversation and, and, um, grounding element. So, but we had a good discussion on that.
Good point.
Thank you, guys. That's, those are great points, and I think it gives, um, gives us more to think about as we, as we think about how to structure the plan and how to organize these things, maybe we organize them accordingly. One thing, uh, Kent may have mentioned it, but I, I missed it, but you guys had a bubble here, our, our comment on developing programs and initiatives to support Tiger Gold. I'm assuming that's probably an acronym, I'm not sure what it's.
Yeah, it is. Uh, it's our leadership development program with Unite Oregon, sorry about that.
And did, did that coincide with one of the, with the underrepresented communities piece?
Yes, it did.
Just gonna stick that over there and just note, okay. Great, any questions for, um, our group two team? Thanks for kicking us off. Okay, uh, let's see, who wants to go next? Why don't we do? Let's shift back over to group one, which included Brian and Dana and Council President Louve and Counselor Shaw and Steve. And let me find your, so I'll share here for a second while I find your comments.
Yeah, I took notes and sent it out to you, Sarah, as well as the team.
I got it, thank you. There they are. Give me just a moment to pop these over.
We also had a very important discussion about ice cream and pie.
Oh, well, while we're getting these organized here, uh, please do share what should we know about ice cream and pie? Any tips for the weekend?
There was quite a few, but perhaps, I know Dana, you had summed it up about pie over, and I didn't capture.
Pie over cake. Pie is the superior dessert.
All right, pie over cake. Well, whenever you guys are back in person together, now you know, and now you know some preferences. Okay, let's, um.
You didn't have a good reaction to that.
I love all sweets, so I'm, I'm not gonna be too, I mean, ice cream over pie, I would just put the ice cream on the pie if the flavors were appropriately, you know, complimentary. All right, let's see here.
Some of us would do the same.
Um, take us through your conversation here.
Man, and teammates feel free to jump in. So we bucketed into kind of overall goals and then some, um, items underneath the goals. So for goals, we had, we talked about the importance of, um, having a community resilience plan. We actually initially talked about as a climate action plan, but recognizing that, that the, those words can be problematic. And, um, Steve had brought up that community residency plan seems to be, um, something that a lot of other communities are utilizing. So as one of our goals is really to develop this community real is, uh, resiliency plan. And then that would encompass like transational electrification, fleets, maintenance, community members, um, access to electrification, and really creating small changes that then could lay the groundwork for bigger change. And then we had equity and a bunch of bullets underneath that. Um, so community access in particular, digital divide. And if there's a way we could offer it the same way we do water, um, because it is a vital service. And as well as, uh, ensure, and that helps ensure that voices are at the table. We need to provide the technology, um, and continue to increase access to the community meetings, but also council meetings, um, and then figuring out a way to entice the community to engage. Then our other goal slash bucket was post-COVID. Now, um, making sure we're innovative, um, that we have capacity, that we're creative. We need to rethink current priorities and then the access to community services, which is vital and needs to be virtual. In often cases, or at least a hybrid. And then recreation, um, with a park management plan, ensuring that there's a realistic plan that focuses on prioritized funding, so we're not leaving that hanging, um, with lack of funding. Probably my words, not Steve's. And then, uh, the next bucket we had was co-designing, um, a process, so it's really having the community, um, almost like a community assessment, so they're telling us what their needs and wants are and that we bring the community into the design, um, project or to develop process, the project or program. And so it's not a top-down, but it's really a community kind of bottom-up process. The next bucket we had was public facilities, which is funding, make sure we have the right plan, the resources to make it happen, uh, reviewing what the current needs are for police, public works, and the community in general, what are their needs? And, uh, what does the Tigerd City Government look like and how can it best serve the community? And another bucket we had is the urban renewal, um, and then our last one was houselessness.
Okay, uh, did you guys run out of time on those, or did you have any, anything specific that?
Well, we, we got dropped off, but then decided to, when we reconvened, we had, we had discussed enough and then moved on to ice cream or an icebreaker. Probably it's my fault as a facilitator, I thought we could add a little fun to our breakout session.
Wow, well, I, I appreciate that for one, but well, and we'll have more time to, uh, flush through these things here in a bit, so that's okay.
Sarah, maybe just a little, a little more background to the urban renewal comments we're making was, um, obviously the goal is to have it approved in May, the significant amendment. And then looking at that as a key resource to address many of the things that are starting to populate the graphic we're seeing here, to have, so to have a, a, um, implementation strategy that's, you know, adopted by the council, if you will, that really starts to address the high priority areas that are, like you said, on this, on the sheet, as well as others.
Yes, thank you, Steve. And any other comments from my esteemed teammates in our stellar breakout one group?
No, thank you for summarizing it.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, your notes were great, thanks.
Excellent. All right, guys, thank you. Um, I'm just gonna, the asset management system, I'm not sure where that fits yet, so we'll just leave it out in the wings there for a moment. Um, okay, let's see, let's do group three. So we had, um, Halsted, Mayor Snyder, Kathy and Kenny. And I'm going to just pause our share here for a second while I grab your notes.
Actually, I sent some notes, but then I revamped the notes.
So should I look at the most recent one, or do I need to look at both?
Can I just send you the most recent one?
Yeah, please.
Thanks. Everything is editing, right?
And I will, I will just preface this by saying that I think we, we went more deep on a couple topics and not so all over, but that's, uh, maybe, maybe Halsted will surprise me with what we got in the content.
There's, um, I appreciate you mentioning that while we wait for those notes to come through. There's benefits to both, and I think, um, some areas will be, because you guys went deeper on some of those issues, uh, some areas will have, be a bit more defined, where others, we may need additional clarification discussion as we get into that refinement phase. So let's, uh, pull these over. Okay. Oh, let's, that's not gonna work. Okay, give me a second while I make this much bigger. Okay, so you guys started with climate action plan, let me just.
We actually didn't.
You didn't?
No, I'm sorry, did I copy and paste them wrong?
No, you didn't do anything wrong. Sometimes it's some, we'll get it.
We started with homelessness.
Yeah, let's start with homelessness then, and.
I'm happy to walk us through the notes, if that's.
Yeah, you walk us through the notes and I will keep organizing, um, here as you begin to talk.
No problem. So, as the mayor has already said, we took deep dives on two different topics. And the first topic that we discussed was homelessness in Tigerd. What we have, have observed is that homelessness or houselessness in our community has been increasing. And the pandemic has also increased its visibility due to a lack of spaces where people experiencing homelessness can safely exist at this time. There are things that the city has started to do. We've reached out to Metro to address the most immediate needs, so we're talking about trash. We're talking about needles and other kinds of mitigation strategies. But there's so much more that we must do for midterm and long-term strategies. And these also include affordable housing, exploring the idea of safe lots, public lockers, safe places to use the restroom and safe places for people to sleep. So we determined what we need is a person-centric, region-wide response. Person-centric, because people experiencing homelessness are human beings, their parents, their children, their neighbors. They are our community members and they deserve dignity and respect. And our response must center their experiences. And region-wide, because no one city can solve this for all of our neighboring cities. There must be a coordinated response. And that was the first thing that we talked about. I took a lot more notes, but I'm trying to keep it concise. The second thing that we talked about was the climate action plan. So again, what we have observed, climate change has a myriad of impacts to our community and these impacts will only increase. It's not only the fiscally responsible thing to do, to do whatever we can to address climate change. It is the ethically responsible thing to do as well. So what we've started to do, there are some aspects to our refreshed strategic plan that tie directly into this potential council goal, especially around transportation investments and also using a climate responsibility lens. So in the refreshed city strategic plan, goal 3.5 speaks to this directly. What we need, we need a climate action plan similar in nature to Milwaukee's or to Beaverton's that addresses the specific work we must do in Tigerd. Is there anything I've left off, teammates?
I would just say that the comment about the climate action plan is that the goal should be around developing and implementing. Implementing word.
Thank you.
And just to add on, it's, um, I think what Counselor Shaw said about resiliency, so those are threaded. It's not resiliency or climate, they are woven together.
Any other comments from group two or any other questions for them? All right, uh, let's see. Get that in, and I'll just keep these other notes, because you guys gave some great context, so we'll keep those over there.
Sarah, Sarah, let me add one more thing, um, and Kenny, it's something that Kenny had shared during, uh, our discussion, and that is that we kind of touch on some of the climate stuff and are, in part of one of our current goals, but that it's kind of, you know, we're, we're not really, we're not robustly implementing it right now, and we need to be, uh, using a, a climate responsibility lens for all of our land use and transportation decisions. And I don't know if Halsted got, I guess I can't read all the notes, but I just want to make sure that thought is not lost in the connection to the, the prior, uh, goals or goal. There, it's goal three, it's part of goal three, if I recall.
Yeah, okay, I see it noted down here, and I've got it noted again to make sure we don't miss it. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, no apologies needed. Um, all right, great. Let's, uh, shift over then to group four. So we had Youth Counselor Calderon, Counselor Goodhouse, Shelby and Toby. So give me a moment while I pull your notes in. You're all very organized, okay? All right, um. Let's see, I don't know if it copied and pasted how we'd hoped, but why don't you guys talk through it? And I will, I'm gonna stop sharing for a second while I kind of organize this.
All right, uh, I was the note taker, so I'll, I'll kind of, uh, I'll, I'll run through our notes. And then for the rest of the team, if, if I'm missing something or you want to expand on something, feel free to, to bounce in. Uh, so, we, we touched on a number of topics, and some of them were broad, some of them were more strategic and specific in nature. Uh, so hitting the topics, I'll just kind of go down through our list. Uh, on trails, trails needs to be a priority, um, having those walking connections, sidewalks, having our trails. And then specifically, um, making sure that people feel safe while they're on the trails. So providing lighting and, and other amenities that make, um, pedestrians feel safe to be on the, the trail system in Tigerd. So that way they're going from their homes to the businesses, et cetera. Uh, post-COVID, we, uh, we talked, we, we recognize that there's both internal city items and external community items. We hit on the external community, that's where we spend our time. Uh, so, and with that, the discussion was around having targeted and smart relief. Thus far, we have already hit on the urgent now problems, uh, what we need to work on now are long-term needs, uh, so that the support we're providing is sustainable. It needs to be an equitable system. Um, and then also for the external community, uh, the discussion on the ability for people in our community to afford to keep homes, um, again, the topic of renters coming, coming off the moratorium that came up during our discussions. Um, under the title of, of DEI and anti-racism, um, brought up the encouraging women, minority, um, disabled-owned businesses and contracting, um, you know, bring, what are some methods for, um, in encouraging that? Um, maybe not always making it about being the low bid. Um, overall, we don't want this to be a topic that fades into the background. That's happened a number of times over the last few decades. And so just wanting to keep this, um, towards the forefront of the city's priorities. Uh, one of the other areas discussed was having diversity in the teammates, uh, within the city of Tigerd. Uh, and then on PSAB, so this is one. And then on PSAB, so this is one aspect of, of where racism is happening and one aspect where we're addressing it. However, this week shows that it's not just about black people and policing. And we need to make sure that all people in all aspects of life are feeling comfortable, represented and heard in Tigard. Under sustainability, there was a lot of kind of quick-hit thoughts. We want the, to make sure that the city is prioritizing our climate and that city actions don't add harm to our climate. That our infrastructure is sustainable, we're doing, taking actions to reduce carbon within the within our environment. Doing things like improving bike lanes and trails, promoting a green lifestyle, encouraging some purchasing practices that are sustainable and green. Making sure that we have sustainability in government, and there is also some discussion of the role of government in solid waste and green practices. Under the heading of digital divide, you know, having online services helps in some aspects. One example was just talked about having online interviews and how that allows us to have reach, reach a broader geographic audience when it comes to doing our recruiting. Having access to, so not just our services, but then having access to technology so that people can interact with our technology resources. We want to, from a communication standpoint, make sure people know about the technology resources, both what Tigard has for services and what we provide to help them to access those services. And then talked about moving forward, having more hybrid models for services such as court and council for public hearings. Talked briefly about housing affordability and talked sort of broad scale, we need to have resources for the, for the system and cycle. So resources that help people go from houselessness to affordable housing to independence in their housing. And offering, talked about also offering services beyond the library to help people get online that actually kind of fit in more on the digital divide. I'm sorry, that got into the wrong category. And then finished with a discussion on communications. And had a couple ideas around having live, basically an idea around city Tigard. The word, the word was used of press secretary. So we're getting bigger. We need to provide a quick response. There's the thought of having like a live person doing communications in downtown. And along lines of that quick response have designated person or people who know the ins and outs of what to say and when. There's also discussion of making sure there's clarity for that person and other teammates of council expectations on communications. Who's doing the communicating? Is it the mayor? Is it council? Is it city management? So with clarity there, it would help increase the speed with which we could be responding. And then to finish up, had a discussion around civility. We're, sort of the larger scale, we have a nation and a community and an online arena where that has permitted a lack of civility and communications. It's not just what we're saying, it's the way we say it and it's the words we use when we say it that are important. We need to be welcoming of differing opinions and not shut down others with canceling language. And so there was a lot that we covered there. A lot to chew on.
Yeah, you guys covered a lot of ground. Team, Toby's team, anybody want to add anything to that?
I'd like to say Toby, that was, when you send your notes, I was very surprised by how in-depth and professional they look. So thank you for being our recorder.
Thank you, Youth Counselor Calderon.
All right, Counselor Goodhouse, you wanted to add?
Yeah, I think they're pretty thorough. It was one of the ones that got, got kicked off from the internet connection, so I was gone for half of it. But I think it was a very good conversation. We hit a lot of points. I think we had one line about someone just more of an outreach for someone with downtown, a dedicated person, and I think he briefly mentioned that, but that was in the notes. And I think there's still probably more areas, we ran out of time, so I think there's still more areas we could have covered and, and hit some of the areas. So we weren't by any means done, but I think we had a, we had a great conversation.
All right. We are, we are a little bit over on our break, but this was a good exercise and I'm gonna go ahead and export this so you guys can take a look at it. But let's take 10 minutes, it's 3 o'clock now, so let's reconvene at 3:10 and, and finish up, have some more, excuse me, have some more discussion around this. So we'll see you in 10.
How are you Nadine?
I'm doing good Steve, how about yourself?
Yeah, doing the same. Comes the mayor, Emilio. Sarah, here we go.
Right. We technically have one more minute, so we'll give everybody the, the full extent of their stretch break, but I think I'm, I've been trying to organize and sort a little bit more. And I think we've got a good place to start here. For our next step.
Do we have a new member who wants to say hello?
She just woke up from her nap, so I thought maybe she'd want to say hi.
It looks happy.
You're saying hi?
Yep.
I think that's the youngest member I've ever had as part of a retreat. Oh, there we go.
Look, there's Kennedy. Hi Kennedy.
So you gotta go.
So fun. All right, thanks for, thanks for lightening our afternoon with some fun visitors.
Been trying to break in all afternoon, so. Had to let her in.
All right, well, hopefully we've, we'll have everybody join us back on camera here shortly. I just want to check in at this point before we jump right back into our agenda. How's everybody feeling about the process so far? I know it can feel a little nebulous as we move through it, but hopefully you're starting to see things come together.
I've just felt a little ill-prepared, like I kind of I feel like I, I, if I'd had some of the materials, like the, that whole first opportunities and challenges sheet, I could have been more thoughtful. I don't know, maybe that's just my own hangup, but it takes me time to process or think through some of this stuff, so.
And that's, that's fair, and I hope, you know, Mayor, good point. I think I'll send everything out tonight, so the, the, I'll export all of these graphics as soon as we get off today's call. So that way, if you have a chance between tonight and tomorrow to reflect on that and you want to look back at anything that we worked on today, as we get into that refinement phase tomorrow, you may have, you may have some more thoughts. But I think when looking back at that context map and what you guys were talking about just now, we've hit on, I feel like the majority of those themes. I went back and was glancing at it and just in the ideas that circulated in your four breakout groups, you guys have touched on everything. So that's one of the things that we'll look for as we go into this refinement phase was did we miss anything? And we'll, we'll circle back to that a couple times. Also during the break, I went ahead and again, just so, and any of you have it that want it, I exported just that initial graphic of how we mapped out those ideas. And Kathy, you should have received that via email. Were you able to, to forward it to everybody?
I don't have all of the leadership team members' emails, so I will forward it now.
Okay, I just figured you guys probably have a handy distribution list. So hopefully that works. All right, so the next phase of this is we're gonna go back in and look at the, look at the map again and start to zero, look at those themes, see that, make sure that I've organized them correctly and have a little more discussion about each of them to try and see if we can extract a high-level goal and then think about some supporting strategies. And as we move through each of those, please, if there's anything, if there was an idea that came up that doesn't make sense or that you have additional questions about or want some clarity on, please, please raise those. This is the opportunity to do that. All right, I'm gonna go back to our screen share. And let's start with let's start with this big one, just because it's, it's a kind of a hairy one and I so this came up, you guys had a couple overlapping topics here as far as just homelessness and houselessness and then also affordable housing and how that fits into urban renewal versus affordable housing and how it fits into homelessness. So let's just see if we can start here and get a little bit of clarity and refinement around what a goal would look like for homelessness and then maybe a few thoughts on supporting strategies. So I, group one, our, not group one. So I, group one, or not group one, the mayor's group, Halsted, who else was in that group?
Kenny and Kathy.
And Kathy, you guys had some language here that you kind of zeroed, the way you organized your thoughts, you zeroed in on what goal language might actually look like. And so any, as you guys look at this, any thoughts on, on the ideas that circulated around homelessness and houselessness?
Well, so I would actually take the, the purple bubble that you've got in the center there. It was intended to be a homeless person-centric response. So at least that's the way I envisioned it. So I just clarify that because it's, we, we felt like they needed to be at the center of what was happening because oftentimes homelessness is discussed in the sort of like, well, there, you know, there's people camping there and it's unsightly and this and that and, and you know, really, if you think about it from, and I think Counselor Shaw was talking about human-centered design earlier, I would say the same thing about this one, that this should actually be human-centered designed around, around our homeless members of our community, and they are members of our community. And so I, maybe we need to think about, I don't know whether that's a good working goal or not, but I think it was what our group came up with as a, as a goal around, you know, it being homeless and houseless person-centric in our approach and our design. And that's going to mean things like places to charge things, bathrooms, you know, lockers, lockers with power. We already have, you know, mail, you know, we, we heard that a few years ago, that mail was a struggle and we tried to deal with that and like just all those kinds of things. And then, you know, potentially just cheap but safe places for people to sleep where they can't get attacked, they can't get, you know, they're, they're protected. I'd actually, the wild kind of crazy idea I had asked about, I think Kathy Nyland was aware of, but I, I asked, you know, could we use the little tube pod-type things that are common in Japan and other very dense areas for sleeping spaces? Those are, you know, they're very small, but they're protected and they keep you out of shelter and, or keep you in shelter, out of the elements. And so those were, those were some of the kinds of things we talked about, but we also really, really emphasized that, you know, if we, we, this has to be addressed regionally because we, there's no way we can solve the entire regions homeless issues in Tigard. And if we do a good job of it, then, you know, we view our role as taking care of the Tigard homeless community, not the entire Portland metro area's homeless community, because we can't do that. Sorry, I just spewed a bunch of stuff, but hopefully that's helped.
Halsted, you had something to add to that?
I did. Thanks Sarah, and thanks Mayor for clarifying some of what we discussed. I neglected to mention something that Kenny mentioned in our discussion was that part of what our response should be is also a way that we talk about these issues surrounding homelessness and houselessness. And I think that's something that we want to make sure that we don't lose when we're talking about this goal. And I, other people have alluded to it in the course of this discussion and I love that, but we really have to understand how we understand the issues. And I'm paraphrasing Kenny, if Kenny wants to jump in, but then that will help us talk about everything with empathy and lead with that person-centric, and I did mean person experiencing homelessness-centric when I submitted those notes, so, thanks.
Okay, um, anything, so I heard the, the mayor say the city's role is taking care of the Tigard homeless community, and this equates to things like places to charge, lockers, mail service, cheap, safe places for people to sleep. Another group also talked about just developing a homeless action plan, which feels a little higher.
Sarah, I would clarify, I, I believe our, when I said our role, I was actually meaning the entire Tigard community's role. I don't know that it's the city's individual responsibility to do all of that, but the city certainly has a central place to, or a central role in that, but I don't think it's just ours alone. Sorry, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, that I, it's an important clarification. This conversation has come up in every city I've worked with this year. And, and one important question to address is what does the council believe the city's role is in, in addressing this, this challenge? Because that really frames, once you figure, once you determine what your role is, that really frames how you set the goal and strat, in supporting strategies. Other, so the mayor's shared quite a bit with us. Other counselors want to weigh in on this, this topic?
Sarah, this is Janette, just for clarification, are we reviewing goals and then should we be diving into tactics? Because it sounds like what we're doing right now, or I'm not sure, just in my mind, I wonder what the goal is for now.
Yeah, so we're, just to kind of reorient, we're going into that goal refinement phase. And so in goal refinement, where we've got some themes that have emerged here. And what I'm trying to get at through these conversations is what's the desired outcome? What's the overarching goal? And then what are some of the supporting strategies? We're not going to get it all dialed in, but I want to at least have a decent understanding for, with, when we have staff as part of this com, or the leadership team, the teammates as part of this conversation. So that way, as we go into the further refinement tomorrow with just the council present, that, that is, the important thing is that if staff has questions or needs clarification, we want to make sure that they understand what the council's desires are. So that's what we're trying to do as we move through these areas.
Great, thank you.
Yep. So other, anybody else on the council want to weigh in on this? You guys feel good with how it's taking shape right now?
Um, Sarah, this is Counselor Newton. One of the things that came up in our group by the teammates was, and, and I think this is a good, a good way to go with considering how homelessness affects those experiencing it. But it's also got an impact on the community, and I didn't realize that there are people in the community that are concerned that Universal Plaza is going to become the homeless camp and that people in the community won't be able to use it. So, you know, I, I think this is a good direction to go, but I, and I appreciate the comments about how we talk about the, how we talk about homelessness and people that find themselves in this situation. But I also didn't realize that some of the comments that are being made in the community about this issue. So I don't know how we integrate that, but that's something that we, as we move forward in terms of trying to address this and really put these folks in safe, because it's safe situations. You know, I didn't, I'm sort of speechless for me, which I know everybody's going to laugh about because I'm rarely speechless, but I didn't realize that, that those kinds of comments were being made in the community until the, some of the teammates told me that.
Yeah, I see Counselor Shaw's hand, but just on that note, I, if you guys were to look at a possible strategy being to develop a homeless action plan, you could tie in having, you know, making it a priority or a strategy to, as part of that, to also have some community conversation around it and do some engagement to, to make sure you're hearing from the community on how to move forward with a plan and, and potential solutions. Counselor Shaw?
Yeah, I was just gonna echo Counselor Newton's points. I've heard the same with regards to Universal Plaza, but also our parks and how a lot of families now do not feel safe taking their children to the park. So I was going to suggest some sort of like community dialogue. There's definitely a concern there.
Uh, yes, Council President Lou.
I would also add our trail system, not just our parks. You know, that we've had a lot of feedback lately about not feeling safe on our trails.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I liked the idea about the community conversation. One of the things that has been, been really beneficial to me with the Public Safety Advisory Board is that as a model for how we have, you know, authentic, candid conversations about community issues. And so I just appreciate that board and, and the, 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 what the folks that are members bring to that discussion. So maybe Youth Counselor Calderon or the chief has other comments on that, but that is a model for how we have conversations about these challenging issues, I think is, is a good one.
So you guys had in your idea mapping, one of the ideas was to potentially reactivate the homeless, homeless task force. So maybe we move that over. So teammates, as you all see this coming together, do you have any questions around clarity on any of these things or getting additional direction? Is this shape, this, when you look at this goal, these, these purple blocks here, does this making sense or anything that you all would like to add before we move on to the next one? Okay. Oh, sorry, did we have one?
Yeah, I was gonna say homelessness kind of ties into affordable housing with me and, and my thought is, what I kind of brought up was this, is figuring out if we can make us available the resources where people go from homelessness to affordable housing, then to, you know, whatever future direction they want to go to life, whether it's homeownership or something like that, but offering all those, those resources and putting people in touch to be able to offer that, that transition. Not viewed as, as, you know, if someone's not homeless anymore, then we're done. Or if we got them in affordable housing, it's done, it's, it's still progressing through, through life and, and phases of where they want to be. I think that's where it gets caught up sometimes, is there's not that whole procession in there as far as how to go through all the stages. And I think that needs to be kind of viewed there as, as a way to go through, you know, maybe a matrix or a, you know, a flow of where to go and what processes.
Again, I'm kind of seeing this overarching strategy of a homeless action plan that could potentially look at your immediate needs, because I think again, it's, you would start to break it into short-term strategies and long-term strategies. And the long-term strategy, I think, would start to segue into your affordable housing options. Alright, let's, on that note, let's shift into the next one. I wanted to start with that one because I figured it would be a natural fit with this conversation over here, these bubbles around urban renewal, an affordable housing plan, the River Terrace, Washington Square, Bull Mountain Annexation, and then the, just the thought around an implementation strategy adopted by council to address high priority areas. So help me understand here, team, what's the overarching goal here? Is this, is it the implementation strategy? Is that just a tactic? What's the overarching goal for urban renewal?
I think it's actually a vibrancy of our community and a density of urban living. This actually, it actually ties into some of the climate stuff in my mind around more dense, less car-centric living in vibrant places that are more built up. I don't know.
Yeah, our converse, oh, sorry, Mayor, you're still talking. In our conversation, as we were talking about it, we even referred to, maybe this is more of a tool than a goal. And so we didn't really go any further of thinking, and that's where we started to talk about, if it is a tool, making sure that, that we bring something for the council that we think addresses these high priority needs.
Okay.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Counselor Newton, when we, when we were talking about Washington Square, Bull Mountain Annexation, River Terrace, how will it advance our affordable housing plan? Our conversation was really around looking at all the projects that we're doing with our, with the lands of our strategic plan. So it wasn't necessary, it was just, okay, Washington Square, Bull Mountain Annexation, River Terrace, how do they advance our, our, our affordable housing plan? How do they address equity? So that's really what we were talking about, those projects and using them as sort of examples of something. As we're moving things forward, we really need to look at them through the lens of our strategic plan. So they weren't necessarily, that, that's, I'm not sure they fit in this little category. Maybe they do, but that was what we were talking about.
And maybe this isn't its own category, and that's maybe the sense I'm starting to get. That these are projects that are happening, but they contribute to some of the other goals, maybe around equity and affordable housing.
Or I guess the question was, do they and how do they? That was what we were asking. Projects that we're moving forward with limited resources, if we want to prioritize and we want to advance our strategic plan, everything we do needs to be viewed through those lens. So I'm not making, necessarily suggesting we have that discussion now, but that was what we, what we were really saying. Everything we set, we should really be looking through those, that lens.
And Sarah, to connect this back to our prior goal, as Counselor Newton's talking about, our prior goal around this, which predates some members of the council, Counselor Newton was a staff member at the ti, a teammate, excuse me, at the time. The, the overarching goal, and it was really focused around downtown, was making downtown a place people wanted to be all the time, live and, and be. And Washington Square Town Center area and the Tiger Triangle now all kind of fit that same bill. So I don't know that the languages should stay the same, but that's kind of, that was our overarching goal for our downtown renewal area was make it a place people want to be.
Okay.
If I can jump in for a second. I know in the conversations that we've had recently, it's really, to me, the thought was if we're going to use those lenses, which we should, then we need the resources to make it happen. That was a big part of conversations we've had of, we can apply the lens, but then we need to make sure that we're creative in our financing strategies to ensure that some of these key planning areas can address those issues. See if Kenny, Kenny, would you agree with that? It seems like that's what we were talking with the team this week or last week?
Yeah, I would totally, I would definitely agree with that. And some places like the city center downtown and the triangle are, are, because of the work we put in with tax increment financing and that we're still putting in, are pretty well-positioned. Other places like Washington Square, and I'll even add River Terrace, are starting off really with, with nothing. So, but I agree with the point that applying the lens is, is good, but if you don't actually have mechanisms in place to, you know, act upon what you can see through that lens, what's the point?
Sorry, I was muted. I'm still not getting a clear sense if this is its own goal or if it's connected somewhere else. So I, let's put this one on hold for a moment and just, we can come back to it. Unless anybody, does anybody have anything else they want to add to this part of the conversation? I think. Alright, let's, we'll revisit this one, because I, I don't have a clear sense of that yet. Let's do, let's look at COVID recovery. So you guys had several ideas here mapped out around COVID recovery, coming up with a COVID action plan, thinking about how to be innovative, creative, keeping capacity front of mind. How is this COVID recovery going to cause you all to rethink current priorities? How can we be intentional? And then there's this external and internal view of, of how recovery might take shape. So what's, any thoughts on what the overarching goal is or the outcome that you want to see?
Thriving community.
Thriving community post-COVID?
Yep.
Alright, and then any supporting strategies? COVID action plan, can we shift that over?
Can someone speak to what that is? Where it came from?
That team, could, anybody want to elaborate on that a little bit? I, that came from group, group one, I believe, our Kent's group. You guys were the green, hosted.
Sure, yeah, I think we talked about, uh, plan in essence, but you know, the fact that. Uh plan in essence, but you know, the fact that. You know, people like getting vaccine now, there's a sense that. Um COVID is over and there's plenty of people in our community that will continue to struggle. Um as individuals and businesses and will continue to look to the city for support. So what is our what is our process? What's our goal? For continuing to support those people or folks who are.
It's sort of like sustaining sustaining that support, Ken?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay.
And the other group came up with um this idea, if you were to come up with a COVID action plan, it seems like it would have two components, this. Internal piece and this external piece. Do you a team, would you guys agree? Again, I wasn't in on all of your in your small group discussions, so I don't want to just make assumptions here.
Yeah, I think that part was just about like, there's things that we have to plan for as a city and how we run our city. Um and that'd be like the internal, like what's our plan for going back? Uh how do we help our community? And then the helping community part would be the external community part, making sure that. People can get the resources and help that they need, making sure that our community has a strong bounce back from the. Economic impacts and just overall supporting our community and recovering from COVID. So those are just like the two main aspects that we see of COVID recovery.
Okay.
This is Counselor Newton. The other thing we talked about is the ARP funds that the city will receive. And how those might be used and the importance of. You know, targeted use of those and also being transparent to the community about how we're spending those resources, so. You know, having a plan in place that's going to indicate the the financial resources we have available and how those will be. How 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 we'll use those and making sure the public understands. What resources are available and how we're how we're allocating those funds.
Thanks, uh Counselor Shaw.
And then no, we talked about in our group about having um. Access, uh so there's not a digital divide because currently there is, and I think that was heightened by COVID. And it's something that um we all agreed, this is something that we could look at, that potentially could be fixed, I don't know if it. I mean, I think it could almost be here. But I also defer to Dana and Steve and Heidi uh and. Folks who are in the group as well as Brian, if they think differently.
You guys had, so digital divide, I kind of organized it under equity. Because I think it probably.
Yeah, we put it there, but we also said we wanted to be creative in our post-COVID response.
Okay.
And obviously, um to date, digital divide through the equity lens hasn't been solved, so maybe it could be through the COVID. Post-COVID lens.
Okay.
And again, I'm just thinking out of the box.
Uh so I'll just, I'll keep it in in both places for now. Anything else? Um so teammates, when you all look at how this goal is kind of coming together. We've got uh thriving post-COVID community or thriving community post-COVID, kind of the overarching goal. And coming up with an in an action plan. That defines the process for what that support looks like and addressing both internal and external needs. Um you know, having a plan for how these funds are going to be used in a targeted way and and being transparent about how the. How they're being spent, and then also thinking about access um through the lens of access and equity, how. Uh how people might access those resources. Questions or clarity from the teammates?
I think that access one really goes to. Uh we or even connects to things we were talking about earlier about how. Um the world is changing, the work world's going to be changing, and so. A digital divide is not only for, I mean, it it just it has profound impacts. And may have in infrastructure implications, all that. We I I talked about that earlier. In, I don't remember, one of the other parts of the brainstorming, and I think that's just should be connected to that thought.
And Sarah, this is Dana. I would add to that, um one of the things that we discussed for the post-COVID, also related to access. Is going to be a community access to public meetings, to council meetings, all of that. Um COVID has created a world where people can still be home with their children and engage in their civic duties. Which is great if they have the digital access, so creating some kind of hybrid system and resourcing that. I think is going to be critical in a post-COVID world.
Okay. All right, any other comments on this one? Toby.
Um yeah, it's part, it it is kind of goes with Counselor Newton's being targeted. Portion in our group, it it wasn't just targeted, but. It's targeted and we were looking at long term targets to this to this to support. Um make sure that that support be results in something that's sustainable. So a lot of the work we've done recently has been to provide um a bridge. You know, for people during COVID, so this next round that it be targeted. So that it becomes um a sustainable model for the people that are receiving the help.
Okay. Any other additions, clarifications? On COVID recovery? Okay, let's tackle one of these other ones. Um let's do communications and engagement. So there were a couple, couple thoughts that came up here, and I'm also thinking back to the context piece, but. Uh I want to think about what's the overall goal and. Uh Kent's group kind of had two, these two things separated, and I I merged them together, which I don't know if that's the right thing to do or not, so feel free to. Correct it if it doesn't feel like it goes, but um there's a piece about the community and neighborhood identity. Aligning communications and engagement, building foundational relationships with underrepresented communities. Enhancing civility. Having, you know, what's the, do we have enough communication support? What's the, is there a designated person? As far as clarity and council expectations, I think we're going to get into that tomorrow as part of ground rule conversation, so I don't want to. Go too much in the weeds on that today. Um so what's the overarching goal here for communications and engagement?
I I think it's a, it's a one voice from the city. I mean, it's kind of a. If if we're trying to re- reply or or respond to things that is happening in the communities from one point of contact, one person, one. One of you, someone that can summarize everything, it's kind of an intake and outtake of. Of uh the community knows where to go to that one person for communications, and then there's one resource where the city. Team can communicate through that person, so it's with one voice, one one thought process. Um so you don't have a, you know, one department trying to figure out how to do something, and if it's said wrong or how it's said, it's it can go through all the proper channels, and everyone knows. What's being said or what's being asked.
That's one element that I heard in the outreach. Another piece of that that came that surfaced was. We have a, we have a good communication infrastructure in place, but how do we deepen the engagement? How do we build stronger relationships? So I that was, that was a more resounding theme. That came out. I do think there needs to be some clarity, Counselor Goodhouse, as you mentioned. On communication, but I think the more resounding theme that I heard from both staff. Um the teammates and the council was this, how do we deepen our engagement?
What I hear Counselor Goodhouse talking about, that may be worthy of some further discussion, um maybe now or later. I don't know what, but uh might be, what I hear him describing is like, almost like a navigator type of role. I'm drawing on sort of the healthcare. Parallel here is that uh or or human resources, there's lots of departments and organizations who. You know, they connect with the customer because the customer doesn't even really know exactly. How to engage with the city, for example, on a topic, and in the same way, if the city. Staff needs to engage with the community on a topic, they don't necessarily know how, not every. Not every teammate knows how to do that. Um and so I don't know if I, maybe that's not the right term in the city context, but. It's almost like a liaison to the public or a uh maybe navigator is the right thing. I don't, I don't know, some some sort of a concept like that. And and I see, you know, Counselor Goodhouse, some of those were more focused on downtown too, I mean, that. Maybe the navigator thing makes more sense for for downtown per se, but the public in general.
Um, okay, thank you. Counselor Newton?
I'm gonna date myself here, but back in the day when all we had was phone and mail. Um I served an omsbit person role in the city manager's office, so I got all the phone calls when people didn't really know what to do. It strikes me that now we have so many. Other different ways to engage with folks, and so I understand. Um Counselor Goodhouse's point and the mayor's point, I think the navigator is a good role. But I think the challenge we have is how do we actually engage? You know, sort of getting these two-way conversations with folks when, you know, everybody's on Instagram and Facebook and Nextdoor and. Um you know, email and the internet and all that kind of stuff, and it feels. Less to me like we're actually engaging with folks, you know, we're sort of. Exchanging information, but you know, we're not able to have real conversations. Part of that is, as you know, my. What do we call that, Sarah? That test we just did? My my relational. But I think what uh the goal is really around, given the, given the. Lay of the land right now with social media and everything, how do we engage with folks? The mayor brought up a good point earlier, you know, we've been um. We've, our efforts have been heralded, you know, we try to put a lot of effort into engaging with the community. And I think we want to continue to do that, but also we've got to think about some of our under representative. Um underrepresented folks, so to me, it's how do we? Improve, continue to improve our ability to engage with the community, which is. Communication is part of it, but I really think it's more about engaging. And it's going to probably look different um for different members of our community. Summerfield loves the barbecues, but not everybody's going to show up for that, so.
So the goal I'm kind of hearing is for just from both of these conversations is how do? How do we engage? How do we develop better, deeper relationships with the community? And then to Counselor Goodhouse and the mayor's point, um how do we, how do we do this in a consistent way? Uh across the city with one voice? Is that, is that hitting it? Is that capturing what you guys are? Counselor Goodhouse?
And 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 I do like the the point, what you said was, I mean, I I was mentioning the one part as far as the city communication, but I think there is the. We do the engagement, we do the outreach, we get the responses, but we don't really really. Do the follow-up, or we do a lot of surveys, but we never do the implementation or the responses, so I know that we. You touched on that, and that's a a huge part where I hear from from either um, you know. Staff members or uh from citizens or stuff, there seems to be a lot of engagement, a lot of things thrown out there, but when someone responds. Or gives a response, it seems like it it doesn't get acknowledged or either addressed or or anything done with it, and so there's a lot of. Engagement, but nothing in return or used or anything like that, it's just engagement, 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 but no follow-through.
Okay. So team members, do you, oh, sorry, Counselor Newton, you had your.
Well, we quit, one more thing, and the other thing I like to do is I like to think of our community members. As part of our team as well, so. You know, their role in making Tiger the best it can be is important, just like the electeds and. For our professional staff who do a great job, or a professional team who does a great job. But you know, they're part of this team too, so finding ways that they can participate as valued team members, I think is important.
That's an excellent point to add to it, so I'm looking at all these things and it's, it feels still a little abstract to me, so I I think we're zeroing in on the. The goal, but I'm curious from the team members, from the teammates, what might be a strategy that would support? Support this goal, support what you're hearing?
Yes, Sarah, I would, this is kind of, you know, one of the things that just strikes me is. You know, we have, we've done a lot on the digital engagement, we have the Your Tiger page, we're on social media, we do virtual chats. You know, the missing piece is that person in-person engagement, and. I think specifically is with underrepresented communities, even pre-COVID, when we had events. Um the turnout wasn't great, and it certainly wasn't representative of our community. The area that we have, that we can expand largely i- is these communities we haven't touched. Um let's, let's, let's go to Bonita Apartments and set up shop and engage with them and do focus groups. Let's go to those communities that aren't coming to City Hall. We know most folks aren't coming to City Hall, like we we've reached some folks. In the, especially with like these virtual fireside chats with the mayor, the people will drop by, one question, get out, and that's great, but. Um there's this whole other segment of our growing demographic that we're not reaching. And to reach them, we have, we have to get out of City Hall, which does take time and resources. We also have to have expertise. To be able to speak Spanish, to be able to understand um what our communities want. And to me, that that's, that's the real big challenge right now, along with. A lot of our engagement is project-based and it's not foundational-based, so. I'll ask you about Universal Plaza, but after that, where's our relationship going? So. Cultivating that over the long term, I think is really the the spot that we need. Uh to start developing those internal resources to be able to do that.
Okay, that's helpful. Any other teammates want to add to that? I I pulled two strategies out of that, your shit, it's a shift from project-based engagement to broader engagement. Which kind of gets at building relationships. And then just a targeted effort to expand engagement with those who haven't been traditionally represented in city conversations. I see Steve and Kathy.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Um just, just to kind of build upon what's been said al- already. Um it's a, it's approaching, it's not just communications and engagement, it's communications, outreach and engagement. Because those are three distinct pieces and approaching it um as one city instead of. As Kent said, project by project, department by department, because we actually get in our own way. And instead of being engaging, we're exhausting. Um the fact that we have like seven surveys going on at once. Um those are areas that we can improve upon, instead of having one department going out. To a board and then, you know, the next month, a different department going out to the same board. Working, working together to figure out all the moving pieces and see how we can collaborate. Um and go out together and have those ongoing conversations, and again, shifting away from projects and being people-based. So um we don't go in and out, in and out, but it's ongoing, having conversations, which ultimately builds relationships.
Excellent, okay, this is helpful. Steve, did you want to add to that? And then Kenny, you see your hand as well?
Go ahead, Kenny, I'll jump in after.
Okay, well, uh further to what Kent and Kathy just. Raised. I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful for the council to have a very specific goal or goal discussion about. Um the United Oregon Partnership. I I think, Kent, if I'm, if I'm understanding your point. You're, what we're trying to do through that partnership is exactly what you're, what you described. Okay, yeah, so those are our tentative first steps in that direction, and of course, that was a one-year. Multi-departmental sort of citywide approach to try to build. Something that is not project-based, but we're coming to the end of that. And uh. I'm just noting that, and I guess asking. Go ahead, Steve.
So first, I think this is a really good conversation because. I don't think a day goes by without some conversation about communication and engagement. It seems like what I'm starting to hear is, I like how Kathy laid it out, the communications, outreach and engagement, and then it's that depth of engagement. Um which, because we've been project-based, right, it's really, we get in and we get out, and so there's, there's not that depth in relationship building. One of these we talked about was the um. And we put it somewhere else, I don't remember, I think we put it at Parks, um in terms of a process more. And that's the co-design process, and it doesn't have to be used as for projects by any means, but it's a good start. Where in this case, you know, with the council's expectation is that we would start to utilize those types of things as part of how we. How we operate, and so um that, I think co-designing, Kathy, see if you agree with me. Addresses many of the things that we're talking about here, and it, once again, it's an art, it's a skill that needs to be developed and refined and continually used, but. It's really that cultural shift in where our mindset is of what communication engagement means from. Doing it for this, to making it part of who we are, who the community is, as Counselor Newton said, is one of our team, so. Um a little high and vague, but to me, it's a key tool that starts to encompass all these things along with like the United Oregon partnerships.
Okay, I think this is, this is coming into clearer focus. Um I I just want to ask about the United Oregon partnership. Is this a, is this a strategy that needs to be continued? Does it need to evolve? I just want to make sure that we have some clear direction on, on this and how it might surface as part of this strategy or part of this goal. Kathy?
I don't think it necessarily has to be unite Oregon, but it's just the concept of um, partnering with trusted advocates who are in the community. I mean, I think that I'd rather focus on the concept than that specific organization.
Okay, uh, Mayor?
What I think is interesting, and I just want to make an observation about the United Oregon discussion is earlier this afternoon, when someone was describing that, I think it might have been Kent, there was a, basically a statement of, we don't even know how we're gonna engage with this group post the program. And that's exactly the problem that you're all describing. So I just want to make sure you're recognizing, or we're all recognizing that even that, that maybe is a good thing and a good, it's certainly a good thing we've been working on. But it's not, in, in and of itself, it's not, it doesn't get to the end goal.
I'm kind of thinking back to some of the comments I read in the um, the teammate outreach and it is, is the thought to bring this more into, to develop those resources internally versus this partnership? Is that kind of what the team's thinking would be most beneficial? Kenny, is that, is your hand up for just from before? Did you have something to add?
I'd say it's a combination of internal as well as community partners and other partners.
Okay. All right. I think we, anything else anybody wants to add to this? I think we have enough to work with at the moment. All right, um, let's I think we have time for one more, because I want to make sure we have at least an hour left to do our conversation about roles. And then, um, and then have some time for a reflection before we think about next steps for tomorrow. Why don't we tackle the, some of these we will just have to hold off until tomorrow? But I want to make sure, so do you guys like to do equity or climate action? What, which conversation would most benefit from having the whole team here and present? Steve or Kathy?
I was just gonna say both. I, I don't know. I mean.
Well, we, we can see how quickly we move through it. We can try.
You know what I will say before, like before you pick one? I feel like we've had more general team discussions on equity than we have on climate action. So I guess I would maybe, my personal opinion would be more towards climate action, because we've had less council discussion of that with the whole team.
I agree. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I'm really interested in phrasing it as community resiliency and how that fits in. So I think that would be beneficial. Thanks for suggesting that.
All right, let's, let's go with community resiliency and this theme of, of climate action. So what's, what's the overarching goal here?
Sarah, can I interrupt for a minute? You had asked staff, just to point this out, you had asked staff for their opinion. And um, I don't think we heard from them. I think we heard from the council, but not the staff. So I just wanted to point that out, just if we could provide them state, space if, if they did want to respond.
Teammates, you have a, a preference on discussion of community resiliency versus equity?
I'd say the community resiliency, though it is a part of equity. So a lot of the subsets are, but I'd take community resiliency personally.
And if we have time, we'll tackle the, um, we'll tackle the other one next. All right. Thank you for that. Let's uh, let's try to zero in on what the overarching goal is for community resiliency. Counsel, what's the outcome that you want to see here? Yeah, Council President Lou?
I mean, quite honestly, I'd like to see a city resiliency plan. Just big picture. I mean, that's the goal for me. And to put it into action.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this? You guys had a lot of specific comments, and I don't know if this comes all from the strategic plan, if it's aligned with that, but just um, you know, and specific things around how it, how that plan would take into account solid, solid waste and green practices and purchasing and bike lanes and trails and carbon. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of uh, detail uh, as far as what, what might inform that community resiliency plan. Is there anything else? As far as how this gets framed or scoped? Maybe it's just that simple. Yeah.
President Lou said I would like to see like some concrete ideas that we could uh, work on or um, because I mean, we all have the same ideals of making a more sustainable and uh, environmentally friendly city, but uh, but that requires action. And I'd like to see some of the plans to get that action done.
Counselor Newton?
Yeah, I think I, we should say develop and implement uh, community resiliency.
Okay. Any other comments or thoughts on this? Any um, from the teammates, any clarification? Does, do you feel like you have the direction you need to carry this goal forward? Kathy?
Um, just when, when we got to see um, the feedback based on surveys and whatnot, I personally was thrilled to see that um, climate resiliency was a priority. Um, because it's work that we were, we've already started, knowing it's really important. So to see it land on the board is exciting. And I agree, it needs to be more than just a plan that sits on a shelf. It needs to be a plan that we implement and activate. So um, thrilled that it's here and we're having this conversation.
All right, any other, maybe this doesn't need that much conversation. Maybe you guys are all, all in agreement and alignment on on putting this together. Anybody else? Okay. Um, I, these ideas are all here. They're not, we're not losing those. I'll take those into consideration as we put the final um, draft together, but I just want to make sure we have clarity on the goal. And this one's over. Okay, uh, then let's talk about equity, because that went really much faster than I anticipated. Um, so you guys had, there was conversation around the digital divide, which we also talked about as part of uh, COVID, COVID recovery. Um, DEI anti-racism, there's a lot happening with, just in the realm of public safety. You guys are working on and want to see that continue. Don't let it, don't let it fade. Uh, there's a strategy here around contracting. Um, also a strategy more for internally on how to diversify um, the organization and, and the group of teammates. Um, how to entice, this ties into that community engagement piece, but how, enticing the community to engage beyond just the, the regulars. Uh, let's see, and what other, increasing the number of voices at the table, that's related. And then again, just that digital, I think this gets at the digital divide piece, technology for both in-person and online. So what's the overarching goal here when we think of equity? Do, oh, is it the same that goal around equity that you guys have had in the past? Or is it different? Because these all, these things all feel kind of like specific strategies, but what's the overarching equity goal? Dana?
So I'll just share my thoughts on that. Um, I think the largest piece of the equity, well, there's two pieces. One is to ensure access to services. Um, but the other is to gain access to input into the direction of the city. So hearing from all of the voices in our community, um, what their needs are, what their wants are, so that they are active players in helping set the direction of the city. And it's only through, I mean, these strategies are all ways to increase diversity in our workforce, which makes us more welcoming and more accessible to communities of color in and around Tigerd. But it's all, it's all for an underpinning of ensuring access to city services and input into the direction of the future of the city.
Uh, Toby?
Thanks. Took a second to unmute there. Um, I think the other thing is about removal of barriers. So whether you're talking about digital equity or you're talking about um, diversity, equity and inclusion uh, from, from sort of racial, cultural, other underrepresented groups. It's a, it's about putting people um, who have more barriers trying to remove those. So that there is, there's that, that equity piece in terms of the access to decision-making, access to being on boards and committees, access to being an employee, uh, teammate at the city of Tigerd. So um, I think there, there's an aspect there that we need to incorporate in an over, overarching sense.
Okay. Thank you, Toby. Uh, Counsel Shaw?
Thank you. I'm very supportive of uh, Dana and Toby's um, additions and thoughts. And I'm wondering if there isn't an element of education here for those who may not know what equity or diversity inclusion means. So we're carrying all the community together in this discussion. Because I'm, I'm often worried uh, that we leave folks behind when we're having this discussion, whether it's, you know, um, we've targeted them with labels such as white supremacy and there's reasons for that not, but um, just curious on what others' thoughts are on that.
Yeah, um, that's interesting conversation. This comes up quite a bit in these conversations around DEI with cities. And so I guess I always challenge the policymakers to give staff some clear direction on what that means. When you say education, what's the expectation? Uh, so that the organization can be thoughtful about how to, how to scope that and actually allocate resources towards making it happen. Counselor Goodhouse?
I, I think you touched on a point where, you know, what, what education, but I think the part two is that DEI can mean so many things to different people. And as it was just mentioned earlier with, you know, recent news events, it's not just limited to um, you know, um, you know, you know, black people or Black Lives Matter. It, 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 it reserve wide variety. So everyone may have a different interpretation of what may be, you know, what, what equi, what may be equal, one person may not be to another one. You, you, is it something that you take into account? You know, someone's educational background there, you know, are they, do they have a, you know, seeing problems they can't get around? What, what equity things? Does that a, a learning disability? Do they have um, all these are aspects. So maybe also part of our all communication strategy is to say, what is DEI to you? And get a feel from the community and say, hey, as Tiger as a whole, and that might be a way to bring everyone in. If you kind of focus on only one aspect of DEI, then I think you start singling it out. But if you say almost like a, a campaign out to the public and saying Tigerd, what is DEI to you? Or what do you consider DEI? Or where's DEI fall in your life? You may find out a broader scope, everything. And then as a, with a whole equity lens, we can actually see a true perspective of everything that falls into the equity and the diversity. And making sure it's a, an environment that everyone is acceptable, what also everyone is part of and has ability to be part of.
Okay, I think that goes some direction. Any other members of the council want to weigh in on this? Teammates, do you have any other questions around the specifics or the, uh, the council's intent? Is everybody just tired? Just checking in. I know it's been a long week, long day. We're in the home stretch here.
I think tired and it's like the middle of workday. I know I have phone blown up with clients and things. And so in the middle of the afternoon, for those of us working, I don't know if anyone else, but he's trying to try to diffuse between everything.
I hear, I just want to make sure that we, uh, we walk away with this so that the teammates have good clarity on, on what this means. This won't be the last chance. We'll pick, we'll pick it up again tomorrow. And again, I'll send the notes out tonight. So if people have other thoughts, I, I'll welcome um, please share those so that we, they're represented tomorrow as part of that discussion. All right, um, I think we've, we've pretty much covered everything except recreation. And so is everybody okay with saving that one until tomorrow? There's a, Toby, did you have a? Oh, I think maybe your hand was up from before. Sorry, I thought it was newly raised. Um, any, any, is everybody okay with uh, jumping into recreation tomorrow? Counselor Newton?
Yeah, that's fine. I just, we didn't do public facilities either.
Oh, that, thank you.
So anyway, we don't need to do it today, but I just saw that one as well, so.
I felt like there was a lot of input on those two topics specifically in the outreach, so I feel like we have a, a lot to work with tomorrow. Counselor Shaw?
Thank you, sir. I just wondered if there was comments from staff with regards to recreation or if they, if they have the ability to input some tonight. So during our discussions tomorrow, we have that knowledge.
Teammates, any, anything you guys want to add on these two topics that you don't see represented on our idea map already? Brian?
The only thing I was gonna add on the recreation one, I'm just remembering uh, Steve, what you were talking about. Uh, the notion was it's uh, parks and recreation and it was, you know, we're about ready to bring a finished Parks and Recreation Master Plan update to the council. And Steve, I think your, your concern was making sure we have a implementation plan ready to go. Um, so we can, so we can implement that master plan. I'm probably butchering what you said, Steve. I'm just, uh, it wasn't just focused at recreation, basically.
Okay.
That was, that was the gist of it. I think the key thing was, we know parks and recreation, especially parks to date have been extremely high priority. We haven't been able to address it. So going through a process to have a master plan, kind of on the heels of that, the expectation that the council would have for us is that we would then can immediately work on the implement, implementation and funding strategy. So um, it doesn't go on the shelf without the funds behind it. I mean, we don't have the answers for the funds yet, but that, we'd be returning in short order with how we would start to advance it.
Okay. Anything else that the teammates want to add, Parks and Recreation wise? Or public facilities? Okay. All right, uh, let's, let's shift over then. And we'll pick this up tomorrow with continued refinement. I'll, I'll try to organize tonight so that we'll, we'll start fresh tomorrow with a new organized sheet and you guys will get to, again, start to see how these things are, are coming together. Uh, let's move over here. So the last piece I want to talk about is council and administration roles. I've done this presentation with so many different groups. Uh, but really, we're gonna get into some conversation around it, but I think first of all, it's just good to have a shared understanding of um, just kind of how these roles have evolved over time. So call this the politics and administration dichotomy. And it's the theory that constructs the boundaries of public administration. It asserts the, the normative relationships between elected officials and administrators and uh, democratic society. And so this is kind of the, the background, the foundation of the council manager form of government. And it's important to have a shared understanding of this, because within that, it creates these roles and expectations in order to have a really high-performing organization. And um, with the council, I asked you in your interviews about what does it mean for next level change? And you just, you shared some ideas and thoughts around how, how you're gonna take Tigerd to the next level and some expectations that you have for the organization into what that looks like. And so I think uh, to help facilitate that conversation, first, it's just important to acknowledge that, you know, there, there are these three different forms of government, commission, mayor council and council manager. I may be biased because I work with primarily council manager forms of government, but I think that they're the, the most high-performing. You get the most done. And because it's, it's structured and formed in such a way that you have really clear roles and responsibilities. Um, we won't go into the history of it today, but in this, the, there's some defined roles and the council is the group that sets the policy, who establish the what. You represent the constituents that elect you. Um, and with that, part of, part of that role is to keep staff informed. You have your thumb on like the pulse of the community and knowing, knowing what the community wants. And so part of, you need to be able to relay that information to staff. You set the goals, the priorities and the direction, and you approve all the contracts and budget. Staff, the administration, your teammates, I should have revised the graphic for, for Tigerd specifically. Um, staff determine, so while council sets the what, staff determines Staff determine, so while council sets the what, staff determines the how. That you rely on them for their professional and technical expertise. So many of them have advanced degrees and have gone to school many, many years and bring just a wealth of experience to the roles that they play. And staff, after council set the goals and the priorities and the direction, they take that information, what we're doing today, and align those goals with the resources to get it done. And so then after, then it kind of kicks back to the council in the form of contracts or budget. And then once that's approved, then that goes back to staff to carry out those projects and programs. So those are, in a council manager form of government, those are the roles that exist. And within that, in order for it to be a high performing organization, there needs to be a really strong partnership between the two. So some expectations come with that. And I welcome you guys to add to this, but just ones that have come up over the years and working with these, with different groups, is that the council expectations is that you guys operate as one body. No, it just according to city charters, nobody has more authority and none of you have more authority than the other. In order to get stuff done, you have to operate as a body. You guys are, need to make decisions. So I've seen a lot of elected officials not saying this happens in Tigard, but sometimes struggle with making those tough decisions to move things off the plate. And then sometimes the plate gets backed up in twofold and that can really cause some challenges and dysfunction. So staff really relies on you to make those tough decisions. Also to come prepared and ask good questions. For just clarity, to communicate with the city manager. I don't, I can't recall what's in your council ground rules, but most of the communication from council typically goes through the city manager because it's not fair for staff to have all these different bosses. So that's why it's typically set up that way. Some cities have slightly different rules on that where it's okay to communicate with department heads, but you want to make sure the city manager is always in the loop because they're responsible for taking care of staff and holding them accountable. And then finally, that partnership with staff are the teammates. On the administration side, again, you, council's relying on administration to provide that technical expertise and to do it in a neutral and unbiased way. Also, to support a high performing organization. They want to see you guys carry these goals forward and be able to do as much. I've heard from just some of the conversations in Tigard, you guys are definitely a very ambitious, passionate group that likes to get a lot done. So it sounds like you guys are well on your way to that. The other expectation is to keep the council informed. I've never met an elected official that likes surprises. And so one of the big things, the big roles of staff is to keep the council informed. And then finally, that partnership, it's a partnership. So it works both ways. And so as much as you guys need each other, both groups, in order to get things done in an effective way. So those are some of the expectations that I've heard over the years and themes that are important in order to make this relationship function as effectively as it can. And I'm curious now to hear from this team if there's any other expectations that I didn't hit on that you think are important to mention. Any others? Did we cover it? Yeah, Counselor Newton?
I guess back to the comment I made earlier about the community being part of this team too. So both the council and the team, you know, we're all, we're on the same team. But, you know, the community's role, I think, needs to be recognized, acknowledged, whatever you want to say, by the council and the technical or the teammates. So I think we have to keep that in mind as well. And so when we're making decisions, we need to be thinking about how we're communicating with the community, impacts to the community. I don't think the community likes surprises either, so.
That's fair. Anybody else want to add anything to this?
Just building on what Counselor Newton said, as part of the community, I would want to include our boards and committees. You know, they're, they tend to be really knowledgeable about the city and really great partners.
Yes, excellent point. Anybody else have any thoughts on this? Yeah, Kathy?
Um, because there's so many people involved, we're gonna have a wide range of thoughts and opinions on how to approach something. But I think if we have a shared understanding that once a decision is made, we can disagree while the decision's being deliberated. But once it's made, we accept and do our job, everyone, to move it forward and be successful.
Yes, that gets back to that one body comment, just to elaborate on that. Yeah, once a decision is made, we all support it.
Sarah, I was just gonna add a few words. I've seen things with clarity. So on the council side, you know, make decisions with clarity. And that on the team side, the same thing when you're talking about the neutral advice. It's also making sure that we bring forward the right amount of information and are clear in the information that we're bringing forward. Sometimes that seems to be a rub that happens either way, where there wasn't clear understanding with the council on it or the council wasn't sure what we're asking them. And then there's also the respect factor on both sides of that. Both sides of the aisle, as I'll call it.
Yes, we could change that to respect and partnership, I think, in the middle. Okay, anything else that anybody wants to add? So for our reflection activity, I just, I want you guys to all reflect on what do you need as either a teammate or as an elected official to be successful in moving the goals that we've talked about today and moving those forward? So I want to collect your comments on that. So think about it for just a moment. And we will capture those down here. And I'm going to actually turn off the share while, and so that we can all see each other as we kind of reflect on our work together today. And I will, I'll copy while you guys talk. So I see Counselor Shaw already put hers in the chat. We need teamwork. What else? Other thoughts? What do we need to be successful as a team in moving these goals forward?
I think we need clear measures of what success looks like for a goal. And there's agreement on what that, what that looks like and how we measure.
Thanks for raising that, Kent. I think tomorrow we'll have some more conversation as we do the refinement on that because I do think that that's important. Mayor Snyder?
From my perspective, we, we need the work that we do on the goals and, you know, whether it's tactics or other things, we need them to result in action.
Okay, excellent. Counsel President Lou?
I think it's really important that we have trust, trust in each other as counselor, as a council, and, you know, trust as staff or teammates and counselors and within teammates. So just trusting each other that we have the best intentions and we have each other's backs.
Yes.
I'd say to be a high performing organization, we need to keep fostering this relationship building amongst everyone that's been included today. So the council gets to know us and vice versa, and we all get to know each other.
Yes, excellent. Counselor Newton?
I guess when we're in the decision-making process, I want to trust that the, that the team is bringing us all the information and not holding back on anything. Sometimes I feel like, oh, is there more here? So I think we made the best, we make the best decisions when we have all the information, even if it's not something we're gonna, they think we're not gonna like it or not gonna want to hear it. I think, you know, and for the most part, I think that's true. But sometimes I feel like there's maybe a little bit being withheld. And I would appreciate everything coming forward, especially when we're in the middle of deliberating.
All right, put it on, put it on the table.
On the table.
All right, Kathy?
I think we need focus to remain focused today, tomorrow, and ongoing trust. And also changing, changing how we approach things. Instead of focusing on why we can't do something, think about it as what we need to be able to do that by going from a no to a yes.
Okay. All right, excellent. Thank you. Who haven't we heard from yet? All right, Counselor Goodhouse and then Dana.
A lot of the things are said were ones I'd say. I think just kind of it's been said, but a focused vision. That everyone kind of knows what's going on, everyone's informed. Make sure everyone's up to speed at the same time and that we're all kind of going along with a collective vision of where we want to go.
Okay, thank you. Dana?
So mine I'll add to focus a bit, which is ensuring we have prioritization. I think one of the comments early on is when everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So really making sure we have prioritization and resources. And sometimes that's money, sometimes that's people. Sometimes that's time to make sure that we can do a thorough job at the things we're doing.
Okay.
And that's just what I typed in also in the chat. So Dana, I completely agree.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, we'll, we'll do a prioritization exercise tomorrow to see lots of good conversation around goals today. And then tomorrow, how are we going to prioritize those? So staff knows what's most important. Though they're all worthy causes and all worthy goals. Okay, what else? Who haven't we heard from yet? We need to hear from everybody on this. Now we have Kenny, Nadine.
Mine is just, has already been said, and it's also around clarity and priorities.
Okay, thanks Nadine. Brian?
Yeah, sorry to be a broken record on that, but that's, that is a huge piece for me as well. Perhaps a clear way of how us as a team can assess what it will really take to accomplish these goals and have a mechanism for communicating up to the council as to what it's going to take. And what folks have been saying about priorities is right on the money.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
I would also agree with the prioritization and action part that's already been said, that was just the two main goals that we should be focusing on and making sure that we have our issues in order and making sure that we get action out of those issues.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, jump in. Who's that? Kenny?
I, so all of the above, of course. It's a great list already. I'm trying to think of anything that hasn't been mentioned. And you know, in reflecting on the, some of the things that we've talked about trying to accomplish, homelessness, tackling homelessness, making progress on equity, making progress on resiliency. One word that comes to mind is courage. Because I don't, those are easy things to name in a session like this, but they're not easy things to implement and they are all controversial. If you think about the homelessness issue just by itself, that's such a vexing issue. And it's not necessarily a popular one to spend a lot of time and resource on. So if we're really going to do that, we're all gonna need to be brave and steadfast. So I'll just add that into the list. But I agree with everything that's been said.
That's an excellent addition. I think, yeah, these goals are going to be challenging. But you guys have the skill and talent to do it. Let's see, Toby?
Thank you. Like Kenny, all of the above. And to just kind of add something new in. I think when, last time the city council set goals, I think that's a good model. There were some, there were some broad goals, however, with some very specific strategies. And there was a challenging number of them. It was still doable. It challenged the team and gave some very specific things to get done. So big topics with some very specific strategies to implement. It's, I thought it was an effective model. It's not the only one. It did work.
Okay.
And we got most of it done.
That's hopefully the direction that we're headed tomorrow. So we'll keep plugging that way.
And I just want to thank teammates for making that happen. Because I agree with Toby that we got most of it done. But most of why that happened is because of all the teammates that are in leadership roles on this, at this meeting.
Kudos to the team. All right, is, who have we not? Who's not weighed in on this yet? Shelby?
So I was gonna say similar to Counsel President Lou. Mine would be respect, respect for each other as people, but also respect for the roles that we play in the organization. Because we each come out from a different perspective. And that's why we're here, is to bring our different perspectives.
Yes. We talked a lot about that with just the council and a couple of team members that were part of that training. But just the various strengths that you bring. And I'm sure if we were to do that with the whole team, we'd have an even greater diversity of strengths. And they're, they're all important and all beneficial to making you guys high performing. So I think it's wonderful. Anybody, did I miss anyone? Halsted?
I almost escaped. I think I agree with everything that everyone has already said. The thing that resonates the most for me is the why. Understanding the why we're doing something so we're able to communicate it succinctly and effectively with all of our different stakeholders.
All right. Okay, you guys moved through that pretty quickly. So I think, so what I'll do with all of these comments is put together a little agreement for this team, for the teammates and the council. The council will work on their, their team agreement tomorrow, but we'll have kind of your ways of proceeding as far as how you're going to work together to accomplish these goals. And we'll include that in the summary report. Any other final thoughts or reactions on all the work that we did today? How'd you guys feel about the process? Good, exhausted? So, so?
Say, as a visual person, I just love the board, the mural and the way it was visually pleasing and the way you laid it out. So Sarah, thank you for introducing this, this way of presenting things. I liked it a lot.
Thank you for that, Chief McAlpine. I'm glad that, I do think the visuals certainly helped to bring the big picture into focus. And Mayor Snyder, I have a lot of respect for that comment in the chat about feeling a little rushed. I don't think I've been through one of these virtual sessions where it hasn't felt that way. It's just, again, it's hard in this format to have the depth of discussion that we want to have and stay within a timeframe. We did wrap up this last part a little faster than I thought. So if there's any final comments that you guys want to circle back on or any topics, we have, we have a few more minutes to do that.
I think my comment is, it's from my perspective. Today, it seemed like there was a really good balance between the mayor, counselors, leadership team being able to provide input and thoughts and ideas and listening to each other. So we set out saying we were going to do that and I felt like we did accomplish that during our conversation today.
Great. All right. Any other comments? Yeah, Counselor Newton?
These are two kind of unrelated comments. I really appreciated what Halsted said about the why. So I'm going to be thinking tonight, as I'm thinking about the goals, should we include a why when we're, you know, putting our goals together? So somehow it's clear, the why is clear. The other thing I was wondering about is having been a member of the team, it's been almost four years now. But I always worry a little bit that we not think, okay, we're doing a lot of other stuff and now we're going to add a bunch more goals. So I think we have to be mindful tomorrow when we're prioritizing and think about the work that staff's already doing and be really clear if there's the work that staff's already doing and be really clear if there's some adjustments that need to be made. I mean, not just what's the priority for the goals we're talking about tomorrow, but how do those priorities fit in with some of the other work that's already ongoing? So that's just a thought. Those are just a couple of things I'm going to be thinking about this evening.
Yeah, Council Newton, I was thinking the same thing when Halsted said that, is like in the report format, we should be really clear about how we state that why. I love that idea. Dana?
So I've been thinking this since Halsted spoke as well, which is just how important the why is. The more that staff understands, sorry, teammates, understand the why of why council has set a specific goal, the more successful we can be. Um, if some strategy isn't working and we understand the why really clearly, it's easy for us to be nimble and make adjustments and changes. So I think the community is better served.
Excellent points. See, Halsted, thank goodness you didn't try to skip out on us. Council Goodhouse?
Yeah, for, for a council, I think, um, how today went, um, usually like, I like to know a little advance what we're gonna go over or some prep. So I think jumping into it, you know, you know, kind of, like you said, you know, don't like surprises sometimes, jumping like where we were working on, how it is, and, and kind of echo what the mayor said, a little rushed, where maybe take more time. But I'd like to see how we do, um, going forward, and I'd like to see how we take everything we worked on now and also combine that with the goals that we have already from before or the projects we're working on, um, with, you know, the Urban Nill District or Washington Square and all those other projects. So how, everything we tied into now, plus the projects and how we lay that all out, um, to show the, the overall goals.
Yes, we'll make sure that we have some conference, um, Steve and Kathy and Shelley will be present tomorrow to make sure that we consider what's already underway, uh, as we finish, finish the goals and do the prioritization. And then we'll make sure that we have some reflection of that in the summary report. All right, any other comments for the good of the order before we talk about next steps? Okay, so, uh, tomorrow's session, as you saw on the agenda, we will open it up where we'll continue our refinement of the goals. And, um, I'll do some work on it tonight to, to clean it up a bit, as I see how things are, have been coming together today. So we'll start there. Um, once we get through that refinement, that's when I'll check in with the council to make sure we have consensus or at least a majority agreement of the goals that are moving forward. Once we've agreed on that, then we'll do the prioritization exercise. And, uh, and then we'll get some direction from the council team on ground rules. So we're not going to go in depth on those, but we are going, going to get some direction as to how, uh, maybe some changes you'd like to see to the ground rules, and the teammates will, will come back to you at a future date, um, with some proposed refinements. Then we'll shift into, uh, the council kind of doing more, it'll be more like that training environment where we'll talk about the council's team agreement for success. So we're pulling out some of the things from your current ground rules that are related to more of a team agreement piece, and we'll kind of modernize that to serve the current council, the current group, and, uh, decide on your team agreement, and then, um, wrap it up from there. Talk about implementation, progress reporting, maybe some expectations you have for that, and, and do a quick reflection and wrap up all of our work for the advance.
We're going to be done by 12:30. Is that, that's the target time? Okay.
Yes.
And then remind me, is it 8:30 or 9:30 that we're starting?
It's 8:30, 8:30 tomorrow, and there's a different Zoom link. So, uh, just, I know some people, there was some confusion in how we set it up to get everything's live streaming and doing everything today. So when I send out the mural notes, um, just I'll do it right after this session, I'll get everything exported and send it to the council. Uh, and I will, I don't have all of the teammates' emails, so, um, Steve or Kathy will forward that along. Kathy will take care of that. And then when I send that information to the council, I will also again send the Zoom link. So make sure you guys have the, the right Zoom link tomorrow at the top of your email to be able to log in in the morning. Council Goodhouse?
A clarification, so you're saying on the council ground rules that we're, are, are we going to be starting all new council ground rules? Are we going to pull from the other ones? If we're pulling from the old ones, are we going to get sent a copy of those with existing ones are out to us?
I can include that with my communication. So we're not starting necessarily a group of new ones. Right now, you guys have your council ground rules structured in a way that, um, you've got like team agreement stuff that's, that's shifted in there over the years that maybe was reflective of what some councils needed to operate well as a group. Um, you also have like some logistic things of how, so League of Oregon Cities, for example, last year released a new template for council rules, and a lot of cities have been working on these, are working on refining their council rules, what you guys call ground rules, and updating them and modernizing them. So I shared that with, um, with Steve and Kathy, and in my conversations with the council, there was, there was some consensus around, in those interviews, around separating out, you know, what are the council rules or ground rules that you need to function as a team? But that, that will stay in existence forever, from this council to the next council. But then as a council, what's your team agreement for how you're going to work together over the next two years? Based on your current dynamic, what does this team need in order to work together as a team? Right now, all that stuff's kind of co-meshed in that, that, that ground rule document, and we're going to try to get some clarity and, and separate that out a bit. So we're not doing a deep dive into the ground rules. We're going to get some direction so that the teammates can come back to you with, um, some revised ground rules at a later meeting. And then we're going to focus on how, based on your current team dynamic, current strengths, some kind of tying back into the core strengths work we did, uh, at the first session, how are you, how are you guys going to leverage those strengths to work together as a team? Does that make more sense? Did I capture that right, Steve? Do you, anything you want to add?
You captured it the right way. If you wouldn't mind sending out the league, uh, template to the council as well with that stuff, if you have that accessible.
If I have, can, yes, if I have that, I can access it, I will absolutely send it. I'm sure I have it somewhere. I will track it down.
I'll take a look too.
Okay, thanks. Council Newton?
Yeah, that was my question was, can we get the ground rules and all the stuff that we're going to be talking about tomorrow emailed out? So we're prepared in the morning. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, any other questions about tomorrow? All right, well, we actually, uh, are finishing with 15 minutes to spare. So I just want to, um, offer and extend my gratitude for everybody's, first of all, your work to prepare for today. It makes the session go much smoother. So thank you for all of your efforts and the time you invested to, to get us ready. Um, thank you for your engagement and participation throughout the session. I know it's a long afternoon after an even longer week, so I appreciate that. And, um, I hope you guys all have a great Friday. Teammates, I hope you have a great rest of your weekend for counselors and the rest of the team who will be with us tomorrow. I will see you guys bright and early at 8:30, and I'll actually, I'll sign in at 8:15 for anybody who wants to test their video, audio, or anything like that. All right.
Brian, enjoy your week, guys.
Oh, Carol, Carol, do we need to do anything official to end our meeting?
Uh, yes, I could, could, I'm so good.
The mayor needs to adjourn it?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Then moved in second at all in favor, please say aye. Or do we need a roll call vote? Carol?
Do we do roll call here?
Yeah, I didn't, we didn't do roll call to begin with. So Carol, do you need a roll call vote, or can we just take a voice adjournment?
We did roll call at first.
The connection's a little spotty, Carol.
Sound issues.
Type it in.
Can we type, can they type it in?
Just do a.
Or I can just say, Mayor, Mayor Snyder?
Okay, I think Steve's gonna do the roll call for us.
Yeah, Carol, why don't I just do it so we have it on verbal record here. Mayor Snyder?
Sound issues.
Yes.
Counselor Goodhouse?
Yes, we have 15 minutes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counsel Calderon?
He doesn't get to vote.
I don't. All right, sorry. And, uh, Council President Lou?
Yes.
All right.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye, all.